This is a test of the City of Palaca audio system.
At this time, we will stand for a pledge of allegiance and invocation. Commissioner Campbell, can you lead us in the pledge, followed by the invocation, Michael Chaplin-Moberly?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, again, we thank you for your goodness on today. We thank you for your mercy and your kindness. I pray, God, that you would crown our heads with wisdom as we do the business of the city. Pray that you would lead, God, direct, give instructions, God, in what things we must do to get things accomplished. We pray, God, that your will be done, your kingdom come, your glory be revealed. This we ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Commissioner Tammy McCaskill.
Here.
Commissioner Will Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Rufus Borum.
Present.
Mayor Terrell Hill.
Here.
All President and Accounting Forcer.
Thank you very much. I've got one item just before we get into public recognitions and presentation. I've got Superintendent Searcy on the line, and I want to go ahead and take this item. He's at a conference right now, so I want to take his item out of order. Looks like he's logging on with his audio. And so if we can take item number seven out of order, then we'll go back to our public recognitions. Superintendent, are you here with us today?
Yes, sir. I am here with you.
We're here. Item number seven is adopt resolution two thousand and twenty-two R sixty-eight. Initiating the City of Palaca Youth Ambassador Program. For this item, we'll read the resolution, and then I will let you and Commissioner Campbell move forward to that point.
Resolution number two thousand and twenty-two R sixty-eight, a resolution of the City of Palaca, Florida, initiating the City of Palaca Youth Ambassadors Program, providing for an effective day providing for scrivener's errors.
So move second.
This is the Palaca Youth Ambassador Program has been in the making for a while. Our very own Vice Mayor has been advocating to get this in the city for quite some time along with Ms. Sharon Barron of the Florida League of Cities. We've finally put some moveage on it, and I'm super excited to be at this point on this evening. This is going to be a collaboration with the Putnam County School District, schools that are represented within the city that we honor or highlight on our Student of the Month will have the opportunity to serve as ambassadors for the city. We want to make sure that we have the perspective of all citizens. And again, these are going to be our citizens, our youth of the future. So we want to make sure that they have a vast knowledge of government. And so this is going to again be a partnership with the local schools within the city, and I'm just excited about it. They will have the, we will have the opportunity to be represented on the state level at conference, various conferences and all of those things. So I think it'd be a great way to get the perspective of our future if we capture them now.
Superintendent Searcy.
Thank you, Justin. I think it's a great opportunity for our students to learn how government works. And I appreciate the City of Palaca giving our students the opportunity to take part in that. So thank you very much and look forward to seeing how our students do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing on this item?
In the audience, we have Ms. Rebecca Moats. She is, she's been working with us with regards to some of the endeavors that we've already dabbled in. So if I can, if you would like to say something at this time at the podium.
Make sure the light's on for us.
Yes, our wonderful city leadership here, we have Ms. Shank, the wonderful Sunny Krantz. We've worked with the mayor, Mr. Campbell, Commissioner Campbell has been out multiple times. And I don't know if all of you are aware that he is quite the rock star in the schools. If I show up without him, I'm in trouble. They don't want to hear from me. They want to see him. And Ms. Jones was also a part of the city leadership here that has come out and partnered with our programs, initiated presentations about local government, leadership, public speaking. And we're so excited about this opportunity for the future, not just for the Excel program, but for all the students that reside in Palaca. What a great opportunity to get a front row seat into leadership and local government. So thank you very much for this opportunity. And thank you, Dr. Searcy. I know you're at a conference, so we appreciate you being here as well.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here for public comment at this time? What's your name, ma'am?
Mary Lawson Brown, and I live at one oh seven South Ninth Street. Y'all wanna know where to get this post in the dictionary. My feeding is trying to stop now, people, because I'm retiring. No, I just want to say thank you first to Commissioner Campbell and thank you to the rest of our commissioners. Because this is an excellent way for our young people to help pave the way for their future. They can find out all the wonderful things that they could do, those they should do, and the ones we want them to do. So thanks a lot. Keep up the good work. You are my commission. I love you all. I call them my children because I am old enough. Everybody's mother is.
Is there anyone else here for public comment at this time? Seeing no one with close public comment. Any further discussion from the commission?
Yes, well, I just think that this is a perfect opportunity because a lot of time when you speak to a lot of our students, they know who the president is, they know who the governor is, they know all these other people. But many times they don't know who their local leadership is, and the local leadership is the one who helped shape your daily life for the most part. We're the guys who are going to impact you on a day-to-day basis. So it's always good to know who your local leadership is. So that's just an awesome thing that we're bringing this to the city.
I just have one more thing to say. I would be remiss if I don't acknowledge Commissioner McCaskill. She had a vast interest in giving me the blessing because I know this is one thing that her and Vice Mayor was working on. But again, life happened, but she allowed me the opportunity to carry the torch. So I look forward, once she finishes her endeavors, coming back on and joining forces with me so we can make this a mighty blow.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Campbell knew that this is something that I wanted to take on and see come to fruition. However, at the time, I've had to put this on hold and I'm working on some other things right now that I think will help when I'm done. It's actually, I'm actually working on my doctoral degree. So he wanted to keep this, the torch, you know, the race going, and asked me for my blessing. So I thank you for this. I thank you, Dr. Searcy, and Ms. Moats, and definitely Vice Mayor Brown. Appreciate you and all other staff that got involved.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Katina Mustafa. I'm with Elder Options, and I've.
We're going to get to yours in a second.
Okay, I wasn't sure. Thank you. I'm sorry.
I got you. Any other comments that relates to this item? We're close public comment at this time. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Give a round of applause for the youth leadership. And thank you, Mr. Searcy, for stepping out of your conference for us today. We expect a full report when you return. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Thank you for supporting our students.
Thank you. Moving back to our, to our regular agenda at this time is our public recognitions. Approve the minutes first for our March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting.
Second.
motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner McCaskill. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Proposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our public recognitions and presentations. First up, SBDC Center. Mr. Paul.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Happy Easter, everybody. It's a wonderful weekend. I was asked to present a little bit about entrepreneurship, training, small businesses, and business incubators. So just a quick presentation here, talking about the downtown core area. And of course, I've only been here about eight months or so. eight months or so, but you're not alone because a lot of small towns, the downtown core area has been decimated. Well, how did it get decimated? Decimated might be too strong of a word, but hey, guess what? Walmart is one of the biggest. And they're even banned in places like Vermont and so forth. So I don't know how they ban big box stores, but they do. So Walmart alone caused a lot of businesses probably to leave downtown. On top of that, you had a mall, and malls are infamous for emptying the downtown quarter. So you're not alone in this endeavor, trying to rebuild your downtown core, but you're trying to think of a vision. Well, I have a little bit of a vision I'd like to share with you about this. So the reason I took this job here is because I love mom and pop businesses and all of you that own mom and pop businesses. I don't like big box stores. So I took this job because it's mostly mom and pop businesses. That is a strength of yours here. I believe that Palaca can bootstrap itself to rebuild your downtown business core and become very successful with it. So I envision Palaca businesses bootstracking themselves and becoming strong enough to become regional businesses that can go to St. Augustine, Clay County, Green Cove Springs, Jacksonville, Alachua, and so forth, becoming regional business leaders in the area instead of having businesses from those areas come here and kind of take over your businesses here. So how do you do that? Well, I have three recommendations. A lot of this is probably rehashing because we did the business planning thing, but basically to build a vibrant and strong small business community that's going to employ more people, keep your sons and daughters here after they graduate from high school, and keep the big box stores and keep the regional businesses from invading here. I have recommendation number one, and that's to begin offering small business entrepreneurship classes in Putney County, Putnam County High Schools immediately. Well, why? There's a couple of reasons for it. Actually, there's like six or seven, but there needs to be a major mindset change towards small businesses. Right now, I'm not exactly sure what's being taught. And I apologize for that, not knowing the details of it, but small businesses are critical to the community, and they provide much-needed products and services. Number two, there needs to be a major change in attitudes. I had an issue when I was over in Tallahassee that the average mindset for people in Tallahassee was that it was a government town, not a small business town, not a business-oriented town. Changing that mindset took a little bit of time, and it's still a long, ongoing process. So the attitude ought to be that you're responsible for your own future. You need to have a, you know, how can I help mentality? How can I change? How can I improve myself type mentality? And I think that needs to be taught in the schools and in homes as well. Number three, small business training provides a pathway to business ownership. Well, pathways are great, and we celebrate a lot of the pathways because if you've got a kid in very wide football or playing basketball or a musician or something along those lines, there's a clear pathway from elementary school to middle school to high school, maybe to pro sports. And but where's that for business? So by providing a pathway for small business people and, and youth entrepreneurs, you're providing the means for them to learn and fail several small businesses. So by the time they get through high school, they've had two or three businesses, and they're going to be successful and, and be really good at what it is that they do. And that's the next generation of your small business owners that are coming, that should be coming out of your high schools. And remember, there's a time lag for this. So, you know, if you implemented an entrepreneurship, small business program now, it would take a couple of years to get the graduates through there and get them kind of up to speed. And then finally, after you do this at the high school level, I recommend taking it back to the middle school level and practicing the small business entrepreneurship through them. The second recommendation I have is the Jim Moran Institute. The Jim Moran Institute was founded by Southeast Toyota dealer Jim Moran. And he endowed Florida State University with quite a bit of money, actually. But it's their mission to take existing businesses with at least three employees and have been in business for three years to take them to the next level. So what they do is they hold classes, and the classes are geared so that the first group of people, the first graduates, help the second class. And then the first and second class helps the third class. So it's an ongoing sort of preparation thing. And it's, they only go after existing businesses because the current inactive business owners are the ones that are more highly motivated than a typical unvetted startup. With an unvetted startup, you just don't know what's going to happen. At this point in time, the Jim Moran Institute and Jim Moran also funded the Jim Moran School of Entrepreneurship at FSU is probably the best entrepreneurial program in the country, if not the world. The key success factor again is taking each class as it comes through and having them become mentors for the second and third class and so forth. Palaca and Putnam County is full of local businesses that could expand and take it up to the next step so that they can be the ones expanding into Duval, St. John's, Volusia, Flagler Counties, et cetera. Recommendation number three, I think it's fantastic that there's a study underway for a business incubator for Palaca, but I have a couple of little recommendations about that. The main thing is the proper vetting of the students or community members or clients before you allow them into the program. So you need to make sure that they have the motivation and some equity before spending money on them. For example, for the Small Business Development Centers, and this is just rough, it varies according to where you are in the country and time of year and that sort of thing, but about 10% of our clients who sign up never show up for their meeting. Wow, that's a, that's a big chunk, actually, but it gets worse. 30% are what we call one and done. One and done means they show up for the meeting, and then they realize there's no free government money to start a business, and that they actually have to work really hard to get the business up and going. And so their kind of get-rich-quick schemes sort of fail, and so they're one and done. That's all they do for it. About another 30% are folks that we like to say you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. So that means we try to instill upon them proper management techniques to help grow their business and do things, but they just never do anything about it. It's the last 30% that actually listen to the advice and implement things. And it's this group of folks that I think would be really important for your incubator. They're the ones that are going to get the loans. They're the ones that are going to expand their businesses. They're the ones that are going to be hiring new employees and growing their, their businesses into a leadership position. So my favorite saying is entrepreneurship rewards those who take action. I'll give you a couple of quick examples and then wrap this up. There's a guy by the name of Tim Rowe. He was a MIT graduate, and straight across the street from MIT's front gate was a warehouse district up in Cambridge, Massachusetts. If you've been to Florida State University, Florida FSU was on the top of the hill.
Say that again, please.
But right on the bottom was Gaines Street. Gaines Street was Gaines Street was a warehouse district. Right now, it's called Student Town or something like that because it's all, you know, it's been totally redone. Anyhow, Tim Rowe, I brought him into Tallahassee Community College. We had a beautiful space at the Center for Innovation, straight across the street from the Capitol, across from the Florida Supreme Court, FSU Law School, right on Clement Plaza, beautiful. We had all the room. I was trying to get him to open up one of his entrepreneurship centers there. Brought him in, he spoke, we showed him around, and the leadership didn't follow up with him. About two weeks later, he goes to Miami and they snagged him like that. So why is this so important? Tim Rowe now has about 15 Cambridge Innovation Centers around the world, not just around the country. Miami's got one, obviously. That's the one in Florida. But just leave you with this little thought on Tim Rowe. His one Cambridge Innovation Center across the street from MIT has how much money in venture capital right now? Eight billion. Just one of his locations. Entrepreneurship rewards those who take action. Daryl Friedman, fantastic guy from Memphis, Tennessee, twice the chairman of the Chamber of Commerce there, was a very smart guy. Two years to get an IT degree instead of four years at a college. And when he got done, he still had a little money in his pocket. This is a true story now. He's a great speaker. You ought to have him here. He took everything out of his closet, shoved the desk in there, put a computer in there, stuck a phone in there, started dialing the phone. Satisfied customer by satisfied customer, he grew it into a $30 million enterprise. Two years ago, he sold it for 20 million and went out and bought a turbo prop, and he flies wherever he wants to at this point. Right? Entrepreneurship rewards those who take action. Look at Firehouse Subs up in Jacksonville. Couple guys got together, sub shop, had a good theme to it. How much did Firehouse Subs just sell for? Six to 800 million dollars. And it was just founded like, what, 20 years ago, right? What about Charlie Douglas? Charlie Douglas, our very well-known attorney here in town, now has four locations. Benji Bates just opened up a second location in St. Augustine. And Tom Hooversen of Marco started off, is that the industrial park, as you're all aware of, with a promise of about 80 employees. He's currently up to 160, 180 employees. So entrepreneurship rewards those who take action. Recommendation number one, small business curriculum into the high schools. Number two, join me in the Chamber of Commerce in a conversation with the Jim Moran Institute's Small Business Executive Program. I've already met with the JMI leadership, and we've already agreed in principle to bring their class to here in the fall. It's scheduled at the moment to be one day and bring in a bunch of speakers with no charge to the existing businesses that will try to schedule to get into it. We are looking for sponsors in case somebody wants to buy a little breakfast and lunch for the group. And then the third recommendation, of course, was make sure your clients in the incubator are vetted. So ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate you giving me this time this evening to talk about this. I see a beautiful vision for Palaca and Putnam County of small businesses. It can happen. You just need to kind of do the, the background things to get it up and running. But you can have businesses here that grow, that hire your local people. You can grow your, grow your own, quite literally, so your, your sons and daughters can be trained and start opening up businesses here, and that way, these businesses can go to St. Augustine and Jacksonville and Alachua County instead of having those come over here. So I really appreciate this opportunity to address this this evening.
Thank you very much for that information, Mr. Paul. Let's give him a round of applause. Moving the agenda to proclamation for Water Conservation Month, April 2022. Ms. Krantz, you have a representative for Water Conservation Month?
We do, sir. Mr. Conkey.
Sir, you come up for us. Go Navy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas water is a basic and essential need of every living creature. And whereas the state of Florida, the St. John's River Water Management District, and the city of Clark are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation. And whereas the state of Florida designated April typically a dry month, when water demands are the most acute, Florida's Water Conservation Month to educate citizens about how they can save Florida's precious water resources. And whereas the city of Palaca has always encouraged and supported water conservation through various educational programs and special events. Whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can make a difference when it comes to conserving water. And whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can help by saving water and thus promote a healthy economy and community. And now therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palaca, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby endorse and proclaim April 2022 as Water Conservation Month in the City of Palaca and encourage all our citizens and businesses to help protect our precious resources by practicing water-saving measures and becoming more aware of the need to save water. And witness where I have here until you set my hand and cause to be affixed, official seal of the City of Palaca this 14th day of April, the year of our Lord, 2022.
So move a second. There's motion for a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed motion carries unanimously. Let's go to the Water Conservation Month. You have the floor?
Aaron, for the Commissioners, I want to thank you for your supportive water proclamation. I want to thank you, Stan, for your support and help in getting this to you. Water conservation obviously is very important. It is the 24th year that the state has celebrated April as Water Conservation Month. But in reality, water conservation is not a month or a day. It's an everyday methodology that we should bring home to be able to conserve our precious resource. To support and show the leadership of our board chaired by Mr. Rob Bradley, last year, they made the bold decisions to waive the fee to plug unused or abandoned artesian wells. The results have been tremendous. In just the first six months of this fiscal year, we have plugged 62 wells. Most importantly, that has exceeded the fiscal, full fiscal year of the previous 50 years of our history and conserves 10.4 million gallons of water a day by plugging those unused wells. If you want to bring that methodology to home, as the mayor may have learned today, we have a program called Florida Water Star. FloridaWaterStar.com is the, is the link. You can visit that and bring that conservation mentality and methodology to your home to save money and save some, and some water at the same time. So I want to thank you for your support and your leadership in the field of water conservation here in the wonderful city of Palaca. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And so you just kind of alluded to it, but the, the Water Star program is going to be a presentation that's coming in the near future here. And it talks about opportunities for us to be able to conserve water within our growth and construction. And so Commissioner Jeff Rawls from the County Commission was actually the, the person who put us in touch with the, with the, with the, with the program. And so we're excited about having that presentation come forward to the commission. Commissioner Rawls is in the corner. And so again, thank you both for, for your, your work on conservation. We're looking forward to the future presentations. Thank you.
Thank you. And hopefully you'll get Ms. Deidre Irwin. She is the subject manager, expert, passionate, great Irish accent, and it'll be a great presentation. You'll be wowed if you get her to come here.
Exactly. Yes, sir. Thank you. Next up, it's proclamation. Bishop Gilbert L. Evans, Jr., 27 Pastoral Anniversary Days, April 22nd through 24th, 2022. That's Dr. Evans, for the record. So Dr. Evans, I know Ms. Benjamin is in the back of the room. So can I get my House of God folks to come forward at this time? Bishop, will you come over as we present the proclamation? First lady.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A proclamation. Whereas Dr. Gilbert Lee Evans, Jr., native son of Crescent City, loving and devoted son, husband to Deidra, and father to Derek and Deasia is a minister, administrator, attorney, community activist, team player, dreamer, and doer. He received a SA degree from St. John's River Community College, BA and two MS degrees from Florida State University, and PhD and JD degrees from the University of Florida. Whereas an honored graduate, his PhD dissertation was nominated as the Dissertation of the Year. And whereas currently, Dr. Evans is the Vice President and Assistant General Counsel at St. John's River State College and operates a small law practice. He and his wife own and operate DNG Childcare and Learning Center in Palaca. He is a member of the American, Florida, and Putnam County Bar Associations, Florida Association of Community Colleges, Rotary International, and Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, Inc., and serves on the Board of Directors for several local agencies. And whereas Reverend Gilbert Evans is a lifelong member of the House of God Church and was ordained in the House of God ministry in 1998. He has served since April 1994 as pastor of the House of God Church of Palaca, Florida, which has a multiplicity of ministries from Pizza Hungry, the Children's Church, and DVD/CD production of Sunday morning worship services. The church is a thriving ministry, having grown from seven members to several hundred members who call it their spiritual home. And whereas Reverend Evans was named Trion Bishop in 2015, appointed chief helper to the chief overseer and presiding bishop in 2016, and consecrated bishop at the 2021 National Convention of the House of God Church in Nashville, Tennessee. He serves as pre-later over the House of God Churches in Jamaica, West Florida, and California, and is general counsel advisor for the National House of God. The congregation of the House of God Church of Palaca is celebrating Reverend Evans' 27th anniversary as its pastoral leader servant. He has lived his life as a follower of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and dedicates himself in the service to God, the Grand Old House of God Church and community. Now therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palaca, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 22nd through Sunday, April 24th, as Bishop Gilbert Lee Evans, Jr., 27 Pastoral Anniversary Days in the City of Palaca. And we urge all citizens to celebrate and congratulate Bishop Evans upon this occasion of his Episcopal elevation to bishop and his 27th pastoral celebration of progressive, dynamic, and faithful service to the House of God Church of Palaca family.
So move second. There's motion for a floor and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed motion carries unanimously. Let's give a round of applause. So Bishop, I know it has to be tough being the pre-later in Jamaica and California. I know that you've got to hate going there on a regular basis. But again, congratulations. And will you give us some words?
Well, uh, good evening to everyone. Uh, I would like to first say thank you for, to the mayor and the city commission for this recognition. Uh, I love Putnam County. I was born and raised here in Putnam County. I was educated in Putnam County. And, uh, I've been here in the city of Palaca pastoring for twenty-seven years. And as far as I'm concerned, there is no greater or better place than Palaca. I'm grateful for my wife, Deidra, who stands by my side, and also our church administrator, Ms. Benjamin. Uh, this has been a great twenty-seven years. And as the poet said, I still have miles to go before I sleep. Yes, miles to go before I sleep. Thank you all. God bless you and thanks again.
Any comments from the commissioners?
Yes, can we get a picture?
Sure. Can we go to Jamaica?
Yeah.
Young man from Little Crescent City. So it's always a blessing to see somebody who stayed home and came back home. Go Gators, by the way.
Never mind. Chose the thank you, thank you.
Next up.
I'm trying to.
He went to the other school, too.
If you want to go there, just say that.
Proclamation Crime Victim Rights Week, April twenty-fourth through thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. Ms. Edwards, chief, you want to join her?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas the term victim is more than just a label and has legal standing and protections that go along with it. Whereas Crime Victims Rights Act passed here in Florida and at the federal level guarantee victims the right to meaningfully participate in criminal justice processes. Whereas victim service providers, advocates, law enforcement officers, attorneys, and other allied professionals can help survivors find their justice by enforcing these rights. Whereas victim service providers and allied professionals can reach more victims through innovative trauma-informed programs such as telehealth services and multidisciplinary teams. Whereas victim service providers and allied professionals can increase access to victim services and compensation in areas that have been historically underserved, marginalized, and adversely affected by inequality by implementing culturally responsive services. Whereas equity and inclusion are fundamental prerequisites to survivor care and survivor-led services that provide victims with opportunities to share their experiences are essential blueprints for support. Whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity to direct commit to ensuring that accessible, appropriate, and trauma-informed services are offered to all victims of crime. Whereas the city of Palaca is hereby dedicated to helping crime survivors find their justice by enforcing victims' rights, expanding access to services, and ensuring equity and inclusion for all. Now therefore I, Terrell Hill, mayor of the city of Palaca, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby proclaim the week of April twenty-fourth through the thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, as Crime Victims Rights Week in the city of Palaca. Reaffirming this city's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime throughout the year and expressing our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. Thank you.
Sure, motion.
Motion. So move.
Second.
There's motion for a floor. Second, Michael Johnson Jones. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Edwards, floor is all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much to the commissioner and as well, Ms. I think very much. I want to very importantly say that I cannot accept this, um, on my own. I wish some other advocates were here. We work in separate agencies, but we couldn't do this ministry alone. I use the health department for their therapist. I use the, uh, Stuart Marchman Agency for, uh, therapy. I use the hospital for certain things that we lean on. I, there's several, and I don't want to, uh, not mention anybody, but it's really important that we all know that victims need a whole team. It's just not me. It's not, uh, and of course, we have my chief and my captain back there. Our officers and I, we work as a team to, um, help find justice for these victims. I want to invite everyone to help us celebrate Victims Rights Week. Um, during that week, you'll find it online if we are going to have the event. But twenty-fourth through the thirtieth is the week that the National Crime Victims Rights Week is celebrated. And the theme, this national theme this year is rights, access, equity for all victims. The theme underscores the importance of helping crime survivors find their justice by enforcing victims' rights, expanding access to services, and ensuring equity and inclusion for all. Again, I say thank you very much. And if we do have this event, it will be at the riverfront on Thursday, April twenty-eighth, two weeks from now, between five and seven. And we just want to honor a few of our survivors and recognize all of the different persons that make this thing happen. All the different agencies will have resource vendors down there and free food, hot dogs, hamburgers, and sliders. So again, thank you very much to the commission and all of you citizens that have helped me over these past seven years. And I do want to announce that this will be my last time appearing for this event because I gladly be retiring this year.
Again.
So if you do know anyone. Okay, yeah, 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 I'll take that. But I, I, I just want everyone to know that it's been an honor for me to serve this community. It has not just been a job to me. It has been sincerely the ministry. Thank you again.
Just give a round of applause. And again, Ms. Edwards, thank you for your service. Next up is public comment. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. No actual be taken on topics of discussion. I want to take the liberty first to welcome Palaca's newest business. Ms. Ramonica Flagler, if you could come forward at this time and just tell us a little bit about your business. You had a special grand opening this weekend.
Good afternoon. My name is Ramonica Flagler, and I just opened a primary care clinic on seven oh two North Nineteenth Street in the Hope Plaza, where I do primary care, IV infusion, hydration, um, school physicals, work physicals, education on different, um, diseases. So I just opened and hope to see some of your faces come through there so I can educate you, take care of your medical needs. I'm at seven oh two North Nineteenth Street in Suite Five.
And so Ms. Flagler is directly across the street from House of God Church. And she is in an area where healthcare is much needed. It's a health desert, for lack of any other term. And she has come to the community and she is thriving, and she has patients in there. And so if you're, you're looking for someone, um, young and energetic to give you primary medical care as well as advice, then she's the person for you to go to. And we just want to welcome you to Palaca, and we thank you again for choosing our community for you to open up your practice. Let's give her a round of applause. Next up, I've got Dow, Haley Dow. Did I say that correctly?
Yes, sir. It's Alec Dow.
Alec Dow, okay.
Good evening. How's everybody doing tonight? My name's Alec Dow. I was employed, uh, in the Blacka Fire Department back in, uh, November of twenty nineteen. It was when I was, when I was first employed. During my tenure there, I've seen a lot of good things, a lot of great things happen. More recently, that's not really the case. So ever since, uh, Chief Taylor's tenure has taken over, a lot of, a lot of negative things have came out of the department itself. We've lost a ton of experience in the last few months, upwards north of twenty years of experience to be replaced by minimum standard, minimum sta, they, they basically have lowered the standard to fill seats of people that we've lost. Thus creating unsafe workplace for my colleagues, my brothers and sisters that I call family. And I, I, I would hate to read about something happening. Um, unsafe workplace practices have been presented to the city manager, Don Holmes, and have been sent to HR only to be ignored and swept under the rug and left with no comment whatsoever. These are legitimate concerns, ones that break not only the city's direct policies, but the department's policies themselves. And like I said, the experience that we've lost has been replaced by people in the immediate circle and the immediate shift that, uh, Christopher Chief Taylor has, has just, um, left from before his tenure as chief. So he has promoted people in positions that, uh, have less experience than other qualified members and demoted members with fifteen years of experience down to the rank of a baseline firefighter. Like I said, in, in the fire service, the main thing that we want to do is protect life and property. And with unsafe working conditions, is that, is this not only possible for ourselves, but the citizens as a whole? This, this is not only something that is jeopardizing the lives of first responders that we have, like I said, that these, these documents have been presented to the city manager himself and HR. But this is, this is something that's directly affecting the city itself. And each and every day that this goes unanswered and unnoticed and gets swept under the rug, the liability and risk of these unsafe practices is raised oh, daily and daily and daily and just keeps raising until something's going to eventually implode. Not only has these unsafe practices caused immediate concern and needed immediate addressing, Chief Taylor has also not held up to his end of the bargain with you guys about living with inside of the city limits. And that plays hand in hand with the fact that he is not only not responded to at least a dozen, if not more, fires inside of the city limits, which he is required to respond to and but he, he, I mean, it speaks for itself that he doesn't even want to live inside the city limits. It kind of goes to tell you where his mindset's at for the overall safety of this city as a whole. And, um, I just hate to see what's going on there. I have a ton of passion for what we do. And, uh, I just felt like ever since I swore an oath to serve and protect this community and serve and protect this city, I, I've had some time to think about this, and, and I don't want this to go unanswered. And I think something needs to be done before something that can't be reversed, that can't be, like, like I said, like a life, it can't be brought back. I, I just, just before something implodes to the point that we are at a point that we can't return from. Um, each and every day that this drags on, it's just going to continue to snowball into, until eventually it runs into the side of a mountain and the rest of it comes down on top of it. This is something that many of the colleagues at the department would be willing to, um, attest to in terms of investigation of any sort. And, um, really, uh, it, it, like I said, uh, during my tenure there, it's, um, I've, I've seen a lot of good things, a lot of camaraderie, a lot of passion, a lot of, a lot of good guys and, and gals that work at that place, and it came through those walls. But, um, unfortunately, a couple of bad, uh, apples can ruin the whole cart, as y'all all know. So, um, that being said, uh, I just hope you guys consider, uh, taking some kind of, uh, 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 like some kind of action sooner than later. But, uh, longer I said, the longer this goes on, there's more liability, the more risk that's being piled on top of this whole scenario that we, that I've witnessed unravel in front of my face between the hostile behavior, the unequal treatment, and just the unsafe work practices themselves in terms of day-to-day operations and, and putting people in apparatuses. And the way that the whole, just the way the whole thing's been ran the last, really last, since Taylor's really took it over, he's kind of changed everything. That's really all I got. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Dow. Mr. Holmes.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I, I try to be restrained in responding to some of these comments, but I feel like it's sometimes by not responding to some of these comments, I leave them unchallenged. You know, everyone pretty much in this room knows I spend a lot of time in the courtroom. One of the most difficult things I've found in a courtroom is sitting during closing arguments and hearing the other attorney. When it was an attorney of a certain mindset, saying things that weren't accurate, weren't true, weren't supported by the evidence and weren't facts, but you have to sit and listen because they have the right to say it. Mr. Dow has the right to say what he wants to say. I categorically disagree with him, and as far as his charge that safety violations are being swept under the rug, that's categorically untrue, absolutely not true. Mr. Dow was terminated from his position as a firefighter. Um, went through the review process. I sustained the termination. I suspect he's not happy about that, and that's, that's his, uh, his right. But as I explained to him in a letter that I wrote to him when I sustained the termination, that, the decision by Mr. Chief Taylor, when you listen to an, an argument or a version of events, some parts of it might lend themselves to objective proof and other parts don't. They become just word against word or matters of opinion. And most of the time, uh, when I try to argue to a jury to help them make the choice between two different versions of events, I'd seize on a particular thing that might be subject to objective proof and ask them to judge the whole statement that had been made by the other side by the truthfulness of, of that, of that one assertion. So for instance, with what Mr. Dow just said, he said that one of the examples he gave of Chief Taylor promoting people who didn't deserve it and demoting people who didn't deserve it, he mentioned someone who'd been demoted with fifteen years' experience, and he'd been, been demoted to the rank of firefighter. There's some truth to that. There was a person who held the rank of lieutenant who was demoted to the rank of firefighter. But what Mr. Dow didn't tell you was, the reason for that demotion was that particular lieutenant allowed the certifications that are required qualifications of the rank of lieutenant. He allowed those to expire. His choice. He was given an opportunity to get those certifications, to renew them, to revalidate them. And he basically told Chief Taylor he didn't intend to do that. He didn't want to be part of leadership. So he demoted himself. There wasn't a rank below him other than firefighter, and that's the position that, that he was directed to. So I simply say that the validity of Mr. Dow's statements, from my perspective, can sort of be judged by that one example he gave, where he only gave part of the example and where the facts of that example bear the, bear out and show merit of the decision that the chief made. I'm very comfortable with the direction that the fire department at the city of Palaca is taking. You know, whenever you have a team, occasionally, as Mr. Dow said, you have bad apples. Sometimes those bad apples want to form their own team inside the larger team. And the problem is, they don't necessarily want to play on the same field as the rest of their team. And I think that that's part of the situation that we found ourselves in, and that's part of the situation that, that Chief Taylor's being, is, is addressing. I mentioned one other thing that I was going to mention later on in the meeting, but we recently had promotional, uh, interviews for the chief. It's actually a position of a fire marshal, which we had opened up to anyone who wanted to appear. We had used outside individuals on our, uh, review panel that, which included a fire chief from a neighboring jurisdiction who I think all of us in, uh, in the, in the industry have a great respect for. And one of the things that I took great comfort in was, number one, he was very much on board with the selection that was made of one of our own firefighters to take the, or one of our own members of our fire company to take the position of fire marshal. But secondly, he made a point at the conclusion of the interview process of saying that he participated in the interviews that led to Chief Taylor being hired. And he complimented the change in culture he had seen. And he complimented the change in culture he had seen at the Fire Department in the year and a half or two since Chief Taylor was uh interviewed. And he indicated that it was a huge signal to him that the Palaca Fire Department was on the right path. I also believe the Palaca Fire Department is on the right path. I think it's on a path to, to, to improve the service that's being rendered to the citizens of Palaca. And while there will always be people who disagree, um, I think that the, the proof will be in the culture that is being created, the, the atmosphere that's being created and the effectiveness of the Fire Department. So I'll, um, I'll leave it at that.
Any questions from the commission?
My only, my only question is, I mean, thanks for the comment, but my only question is if everything is ran through the city attorney and, and HR, well, um, have we went through all of that before? So.
We sure have.
So.
Is the investig- is the investigation closed at this time?
Yes, it is.
Were you able to share the results from that? The commission?
The review, I, I, I wrote a uh a letter to Mr. Dow advising him that his appeal of the decision or, or his request that I review the decision of uh Chief Taylor had been concluded and I found no reason to change the decision that Chief Taylor had made to terminate his services.
So in other words, you did respond?
I did respond, both an email and a certified mail letter, which he didn't claim.
Any other questions from the commission, sorry, commission of board?
That's all I.
All right.
Sir, I'm not, I'm not a chance to respond at all there.
It's not a trial today. We're, well, if you could stick around, we'll, we'll get with you in a second after the meeting, if you want to stick around.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, Katrina Mustafa. I'm gonna try this again. Elder Options. Thank you, Bishop.
Good afternoon, my name is Katrina Mustafa, I'm with Elder Options and we are private nonprofit whose focus is to assist older adults in remaining at home as long as possible. We realize there's a time and place for nursing home care, but we also want seniors to age at home. And we do that by providing services to assist them with doing that. And I'm, I'm here before you today as the, I think it was the mayor who mentioned about there being a health desert. And what our focus and what we need assistance with is not funds, but we need help in getting the word out to the seniors and the disabled community in the city of Palaca. We have classes focused on chronic disease management. We have classes that are focused on fall conventions. And we have classes that are focused on mental illness. So helping with depression and other type of conditions. So I want people to know, we are out here in the community. I have two of my staff here, um Carolyn Jones and Lisa. And so we are ready to assist the city and we want people to know about this. We've been around over forty years, but we've having a hard time getting into this community. So I'm here today just to inform the, the commissioners and the city that we are here and we are ready to serve.
Again, thank you very much for choosing Palaca.
Would I like to leave or anyone who would like to thank?
You can, you can actually just ask me to the city attorney. And, and also for both of you, um, we have the mayor's health challenge coming up. If you give Mr. Cut right in back of the room, wave your hand, Mr. Cut right, he can give you some additional information. We've got a number of uh health agencies as well as the hospital participating. Um also, the uh, the grandmother of senior citizens in Palaca is Ms. Mary Lawson Brown. She knows everybody from infancy on. Um, she just did a uh senior art show as well, so she's, she has a wealth of information. And also Ms. Elektra Kitchen's former city commissioner in the back of the room. Between the two of them, if they can't direct you in the right place, you don't need to go there.
All right, thank you. I would like to add, um, we're also focused on elder abuse prevention and education. And so I was excited to hear about Victims Week, not planning on participating in that, but we need to get more information about that and how we can prevent seniors from being oppressed physically and everywhere.
So we would be excited to have you with the booth as well as Helping Hands, heart-to-heart over at, at, at the Health Challenge, because we're gonna disseminate a bunch of information throughout the community and it's gonna be a good time for us all next month. So definitely, we look forward to it.
Okay, so who I reach out about that?
Mr. Cut right in the back, he will get you in touch with Mr. Phils who's working on.
All right, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Rawls, I'm gonna bring you up on an item. Just to give a quick update, it's always scary to bring you up for anything quick. But we just had an opportunity to have a joint commission meeting and I didn't want to waste the opportunity of having you here just to kind of give us an update of how the joint commission meeting went.
Uh, I, I, I don't think it could have gone any better, to be honest with you. It's the first meeting that we've been able to have, um, in a little over three and a half years or so. It's, it's been a long time coming, um, you know, with, with the growth and the progress that Putnam County and, and the city of Palaca are starting to experience. You'd really have to be an ostrich if your head's stuck in the sand and not realize that we're in the precipice of a lot of it. Um, the, the epicenter of Putnam County is Palaca. And as Palaca goes, I believe the rest of the county is gonna go. So we really need to work together. There was um a, a lot of, uh, I, I, I just thought there was a really good spirit of cooperation. I think there's a lot of projects that we can work together on, reduce the duplication of services, um save the taxpayers some money, um but be able to provide a, a lot more services, a lot better services together. So um I was really pleased, I, I was, I, um, I don't, I don't, I haven't heard anyone at all not have something really um comforting to say about the way the whole process worked. Uh Commissioner Pickens did at our, our last meeting on Tuesday, uh reference that we'll be, I'm having another meeting in the next quarter, so it looks like we'll be going to quarter of the meetings. Um, I would highly encourage that. I think it's, it's beneficial to everybody and if maybe we can meet more often, obviously. But um it's a pleasure for me to serve with everybody in the commission on the, the city C R A. That's another group that um I believe is working well together and we're working for the benefit of all the public. So uh, thanks for your time the other day. I thought you all just did a smashing job and look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here for public comment at this time? I, I know I have my bartram, um, I have my bartram group as well as the daughters here. We will, I, I will have you, we will call you up right after the consent agenda, if that's okay. And so is there anyone else here for public comment at this time? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment at this time. We'll move forward with item number five, which is an emergency item. Uh, it's a DOP Resolution twenty twenty-two R seventy, authorizing the mayor and interim city clerk to execute an attached Blue Crown Festival Entertainment Agreement with R Q Music LLC in an amount not to exceed one hundred forty-five thousand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number twenty twenty-two R seventy, resolution of the City of Blackwater, authorizing the mayor and interim city clerk to execute an attached contract in the terms of the proposal not exceeding forty-five thousand, providing for scribbler's errors.
So move. Second. Motion on the floor in a second. Um, we're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. I just want to make the comment on this, although the commission gave authorization for us entering into the contract with the with the promoter during the last meeting, there was also, uh, we wanted to bring this back to make sure that you got a chance to review the contract and see if there were any questions from the commission. Uh, I didn't feel comfortable with just signing the contract without making sure that we got, you know, questions and direction from the commission. Also, did I, we didn't, did I, we get a motion for this as an emergency item?
No, I'll make a motion that we accept this as an emergency item.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose motion carries unanimously. And so we've got a pending motion on the floor. Time is of the essence. Uh, we've got deposits that are due yesterday and that we held off because we wanted to make sure that the commission didn't have any questions from a contractual standpoint. Uh, our commitment is still um for the resources that we talked of, the seventy-five thousand. I've been the initial piece and the twenty-five thousand from TDC coming as well as contributions from uh various sponsors as well as vendors who have already started um bringing in resources and signing up um as of today for, for the festival. So we're excited about the Blue Crown Festival. I just wanted to make sure that you understood that we brought this back because we wanted to make sure that everyone had an opportunity to review the contract. Is there any other discussion on this contract?
Yeah, it's just one quick thing, one accent too. Um, did we structure that in the contract supposedly where the funding that was supposed to have been, whatever the city funding was, to itemize it where the city funding wasn't gonna be purchasing alcohol?
It's written in the contract specifically.
The other question was that um is, was it possible that the TDC could con- contribute more from, from their funding?
Based upon what was in place, the recommendation from the gun and commission, we can go back and ask for additional funding from TDC and try to get a special call meeting as it relates to that, but it wouldn't show up in this contract.
And I do think Commissioner Pickens did address that he will go back.
So if you look at the change in the number from the original budget at one sixty to one forty-five, that's basically pulling alcohol number out.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to add clarification. I did some clarification in the Article Five dispersment so there wouldn't be any um ambiguity. Um, it's on the last sentence. It says, "All revenue generated minus the alcohol sales in excess of eighty-five thousand dollars shall be paid to the city and deposited into a separate city account as seed money for future Blue Crown events."
Thank you. Thank you.
Any, any further questions? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose motion carries unanimously. Next up, consent agenda items A through F. Are there any items on the consent agenda that you wish to have removed at this time?
I'd like to have B removed for question.
Item B, are there any items besides item B that you want to have removed at this time?
E.
Item B and E or any other items? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda excluding B and E.
You said D?
You said B as a boy.
As well as D, I just want clarification on D, D as well as all.
B and E.
All right, BD and E?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, it's finally.
All right, so there's a motion for, to accept everything but I, BD and E?
Second.
It's the second, Michael Marson McCaskill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose motion carries unanimously. Before we go there, item C was approved. I can have it this time. Mr. Billy Bartram. You can come forward and also the daughters will come forward at this time. The historic marker of the riverfront for William Bartram.
Thank you, Mayor and state officials. William Bartram chapter, daughter of the American Revolution. I'm Julie Thompson, the secretary of our chapter. Uh, we were here to ask permission to place a historical marker on the riverfront near the playground in order to get permission from the National Society of the A R. Uh, we need to have written permission of the landowner to place the marker. So that was one of the things that we had to do as a prerequisite in order to file for the historical marker. The marker will be similar to the ones placed around the city of representing William Bartram. It will be a pole metal in nature and would contain the following text. "In seventeen seventy-four, while coasting past the Seminole Settlement on the riverfront of what is now Palaca, William Bartram wrote his, in his book Travels, and I quote, 'There were eight to ten inhabitants facing the river. Some of the youth were naked, up to their hips in water, fishing with rods and lines, whilst others, younger, were diverting themselves and shooting frogs with bows and arrows. On my nearer approach, the little children took to their heels. But the stouter youth stood their ground and smiling called to me. They were civil and appeared happy in their situation." The proposed location, uh, suggested first choice would be between the playground and the restrooms. The proposed second choice would be the other side of the playground somewhere near the existing bench on the riverfront. Once everything is in place, it will take three to six months to get the necessary permission from the National Society and then the marker will be fabricated. And we have given, uh, been given approval of the list of vendors to make the marker. Um, we also have our very own William Bartram, Mike Adams here from the Bartram Society of Florida here to speak.
Do your ladies want to say? Okay. Okay, good, good.
It's on you, Billy Bartram.
All right, Mr. Mayor, city commissioners, uh, that, thanks for uh giving us over here for this uh project. This is quite an exciting project and those of you that uh maybe aren't familiar with William Bartram, he came through this area as she was seventeen seventy-four. And he really was an important explorer in Putnam County and Palaca. Putnam County is the epicenter of, of his adventures. But more importantly, in modern times, the Bartram Trail Society of Florida, uh, Mr. Mayor, as you know, we've been working with the school board for over seven years. And between seven hundred and eight hundred second graders, we do an educational program for them on the riverfront every year. And it's just quite an amazing endeavor. We've partnered with the school board, we've partnered with the city of Palaca and also Putnam County. And we think that this program is really successful. So from the Bartram Trail Society of Florida, we, we really support getting a marker out there through the Daughters of the American Revolution. I think, I think it's really important and it's really gonna help folks understand the, the significance of, of the waterfront here at Palaca and Putnam County and the St. John's River. My second item, Mr. Mayor, and I handed out these, these flyers. We have the Bartram Frolic coming up a week from this weekend, right here on the riverfront. And that's open to the public. It's free. We got a lot of good things going on. We're gonna have food trucks, we're gonna have bands, we're gonna have music. One really exciting component that we have is the militia from Fort Mosey, another group of reenactors that comes over and they're really exciting. They fire muskets and cannons and the kids just really like it. So it's, it's, it's quite an event. Mr. Mayor, I know you've intended several of our events around the evenings with, with this event. And like I say, it's highly successful. So I'm here on two counts. The first count is supporting their marker on the riverfront. And wherever the city can approve and define where the sign location would be, would be fine. And then the second item is the Bartram Frolic coming up a week from this Saturday on the riverfront. Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor and the commissioners.
Thank you for the, thank, thank you both. And I'll tell you, I was reading, um, I was reading some information on Rose, on Rose plantation. And it, it documents many of it, some of the explorations of Bartram, as you talk about Rose Town, Rose Plantation and, and the history that goes along with that. So we're just excited about the commemoration of the explorations of William Bartram. We are pleased and, and really just um indebted to the daughters as well for the work um that you're doing and making sure that this, this marker is, is here and it creates an additional attraction within the community as a whole and an educational piece for our children as they're at the playground. And also to the Bartram Committee for the wonderful work that they're doing and making uh this festival that started just a few years ago, um, become a national festival. It's not gonna just be a regional festival, it'll be a national festival. And so every year it gets bigger and better. And so we are just pleased and excited and we, again, we appreciate you so much. Let's give them a round of applause.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also have some of these flyers available if anybody would want one for the frolic.
Next up, item six B, adopt resolution twenty twenty-two R sixty-three, source well pricing H M G P forty-two eighty-three, five zero eight lift station project for a total of three hundred seven thousand sixty dollars and forty-nine cents. Mr. Griffin?
Hi.
Just before you get to it.
Uh, resolution number twenty twenty-two R sixty-three, a resolution authorizing order of social uppricing for H M G P four three three seven five zero eight R east north lift station, providing to bring power, a cannibal in the amount of three hundred and seven thousand sixty dollars forty-nine cents, providing for scribbler's errors.
So move.
Second.
Motion for a second. Commissioner Board, you pull this item?
Sir?
Oh, yeah, I, I asked for this one. Um, I just seen where I had an email where there was a total cost increase. Just how much, what, how much was in, increased since it was, uh, it just submitted today? What's the difference?
It's approximately twenty-two thousand dollars, Commissioner. It does still fall within the um, uh, the grant budget or we're significantly under budget right now. Basically what happened is last week in reviewing the agenda packet, I noticed there was an error in the quotation for the River Street Lift Station. They had quoted a diesel model and not a compressed natural gas. So quickly asked them to revise the quote and that's the difference in it, sir.
Okay, all right. I mean, I just, I just know I seen where it says a increase uh in the price. I didn't see it in the reflection in the agenda, so I appreciate it. Thanks, sir.
Any other questions? As it relates to this item?
Is that B?
That's B, B as a boy.
Yeah, we'll look at the total uh project budget of four hundred ninety-five, excuse me, fifty-nine thousand four hundred six dollars. And it said seventy-five percent of that is paid through a grant, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And so that's, that's been about three hundred
And so that's estimating about three hundred and forty-four thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars fifty cents. So that will leave the city money, the funds that's coming from us as a match, twenty-five percent would be like a hundred and fourteen thousand.
Correct.
Is that correct? But I guess that's why I was kind of stuck because I didn't see. There's another number down here. All those numbers up there then at the end, recommended action says two hundred and eighty thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars.
That's probably because we updated the agenda item today, sir, and we forgot to, or we didn't catch all the numbers. So it is for the three hundred and seven thousand sixty dollars and forty-nine cents.
Um, I I don't like consenting to stuff that isn't accurate. You guys bring it up here. It's not accurate. With consenting to things may seem minute, but that number is a lot different than the number we have right here. I don't know if you guys are looking at it.
This is actually built into your current budget. It actually came in under budget. So there's actually a cost savings in the utility fund based on the award that we're doing at this point.
So which one are we approving? Two hundred and eighty thousand one hundred and forty-two?
Three hundred and seven thousand sixty dollars and forty-nine cents.
So you understand my concerns, Commissioner? So the resolution is off. The resolution is closer to the generator cross from the previous one.
And that was updated.
Yeah, but it's not in the packet. So the packet, the packet has the old number in there.
We're telling you.
I understand it was late.
So commissioners, the only other option was to pull this item. Staff is really seeking to get these generators in before we get into the busy part of hurricane season. We are under a current consent order with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection for the River Street Lift Station failing during Irma. So it's critical that we move forward with this project.
Script is there.
And once again, it is budgeted, came in under budget. So this is not additional funds that we're asking to be pulled from reserves. It's built and disbursed.
Let's make sure we note the script is there and gives us an opportunity to make sure we have clarity as we put the numbers together and what's in place. So. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Also, I I guess with me being the technology person, I get emails. So moving forward, when we make these type of changes and we get an email, let's make it customary that we'll go ahead and make some formal kind of contact so that we'll be prepared or make sure that the changes that are made are put in the packet just so we won't run into this issue again.
And usually when that happens, I I usually get a call from Jonathan. I don't know. Doing every other commissioner, but usually I would get a call. I'm not special. I'm just saying I'm.
Oh, so that's what you do, Mr. Griffin?
Oh.
No, it's, so anyway, before we believe the point.
We will try and do better moving forward. You know, this is an important item. We didn't want to delay this until the next meeting. Again, we noticed the issue last week. We requested the updated pricing from the vendor. It didn't come in until yesterday, and we updated it as soon as we could. Apologize for not making calls to the commissioners.
But but I think more than anything else, just the fact that it's a good catch by Commissioner Jones on the numbers, on the resolution for what we have. But it is, it's a, it's a, it's a learn, it's a teachable moment for all of us at this point, and it gives us an opportunity to have additional clarity and additional checks and balances as we move forward. So any other discussion from the commission at this point? We're now before for public hearing. Is anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Next.
Motion carries for the one. Next up, four D, adopt resolution twenty twenty-two R sixty-five, rather execution of modification to HMO zero zero five, CDB GR, DRI. Matthew, adding to the period of performance.
Thank you, Commissioner. Resolution number twenty twenty-two R sixty-five, resolution authorizing execution of modification number two to CDB G, the young HM zero zero five with the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity providing for scrubbers' airs.
So on the floor, a second. For public hearing. Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Questions on item D, Commissioner?
Yeah, I actually give this one pull to to clearly identify where we're working, where it was being done. It says Fourteenth and Fifteenth Street Drain and Project. Is it North Fourteenth and Fifteenth or South Fourteenth? I know, but it need to be clarified in this document for will now and future reference as far as the work and where that work is being done. Can we agree on that? Can we get that included? I I know you may say that's minute. However, when we're looking at this or we are often this eyes and others are looking, it doesn't state it clearly, and this is detailed work. Because as I looked at it at first, I thought we, when I was just was skimming over it, I thought that we were moving over North Fourteenth and North Fifteenth Street because we talked about the the doing that work over there. And I'm, I just for a point of clarity, I would like to know what it means to as far as we're going to extend this out with the deadline being December fourteenth twenty-two. We won't be done with that project by then?
Sir, I hope we are done by December fourth twenty twenty-two because that is the grant deadline.
Right. So if not, because of long-term resilience, plan, we have to get an extension request into a DOE. Is it a DOE?
Okay, so right now, the, I don't remember the exact contract end date with DB Civil, but it does not line up with this. It actually is in advance of the December fourth deadline. So we have a little bit of cushion there with the grant deadline and what we have with the contractor. Now, if we get into the summer and we're starting to see additional delays, there will be conversations with DEO about extending this so that we don't get out of contract compliance with DEO and we don't jeopardize that grant reimbursement. Right now, they're progressing nicely. We actually walked the project today, looked at the stormwater structures to get ready to start putting grade stakes in, which means they'll be doing some horizontal work, which includes curb, sidewalks, and road base. So hopefully, hopefully fingers crossed, you know, by the by the end of May, you're going to start seeing some real roads out there. And yes, I apologize, that should within the now there for actually say South Fourteenth and South Fifteenth Street as a be specific. And we can make that change as the script is there.
This is one point. So we do it correctly. Thank you.
I thought I saw where it said Laurel, when it Laurel, Laurel and Fourteenth was part of that option D.
It includes a lot more roads in South Fourteenth and Fifteenth. Generally, it's South Fourteenth and Fifteenth from Diana all the way to St. John's Avenue.
Any further discussion? I have a motion in this.
Yeah.
Not before public hearing. Anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose? Moving on to item E, adopt resolution twenty twenty-two R sixty-six toward traffic signal and light maintenance contract. Kent Brothers and Somerville Systems.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution authorizing order of traffic signal maintenance and emergency repair services to the Kent Brothers, providing for scrubbers' airs.
Motion on the floor is your second. It wasn't a second. Motion on the floor, there's a motion on the floor in a second by Commissioner Jones. We're not up in the floor for public hearing. Anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing.
Question? I do. Summer Bill Systems, that the company that's currently responsible, we have contract for keeping our traffic control devices up. Yeah, I do have a question. So I have a question that we just pulled the lights from downtown. And as I understand, someone was, were damaged due to lightning. And I know what the cost was to replace them. Now, these bids look like just for the inspections, rather low. We have ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, and they come in at thirty-three thousand. But what was the difference in inspections? Have you asked that question? Because that just look out of place.
So we're actually agreeing to standard rates. So we'll pay by hour for call out, signal maintenance and repair that's authorized, and emergency call out services. Now, they do not charge us mileage, even though that's in there because they're located in Putnam County. And we are getting reduced rates. They gave us the reduced rate offering to get through the end of the fiscal year, and then we can either go back out for bid or renegotiate. So the cost that's in your packet is what St. Augustine secured, but they've offered us lower rates. Now, inspection, sir, we we are contracted with the Florida Department of Transportation to maintain and do the inspections on an annual basis for the signals that are on the state system. So that includes everything on Reed Street, on Ninth Street, State Road Twenty. I think we have one on State Road Nineteen, and the county has the rest of them, and they pay us per signal. Now, we are going to have reduced costs moving forward because the signals that we removed, we didn't get revenue from the state. That just came out of your general fund budget. Does that address your questions?
Makes sense. What you said, however, still that much in travel, that's a lot. That's drastic. But it did answer my question. So they're going to do by annual inspections. So if we only required to do annual inspection to DOT, are we duplicating service or what? Why are we? I don't know. That's what I'm asking you. I don't, I don't know how.
So basically, the easiest way to put this is we do what's required by Department of Transportation. Now, for our signals, which we will have, I think, two that are left that aren't funded by DOT, it, we still adopted DOT specifications. So we're still going to have to go out and do the inspections as required by DOT, but we don't have to submit those inspections to DOT for reimbursement with our contract with DOT. We will not do anything over and above what DOT requests unless we have a deficiency in our signals. Does that make sense?
DOT requires once a year inspection.
That's my understanding. And again, sir, I'd have to go double check.
I would like to have that information. That's good information to have because we said we're contracting for every two years versus what's required, which is annual.
You're saying we're contracting for inspection twice a year or every two years?
This is in this contract, by annual inspection. So that's every two years.
Every six months.
By annual.
Commissioner, if it's your intent to make sure that we're only doing what we're required to do per DOT,
That's what.
and it's City of St. Augustine's procurement or solicitation, it goes above and beyond that. Just because it's in the contract terms doesn't mean that we have to do that. Does that make sense? It's just what they quoted to the City of St. Augustine. What we are doing is we are piggybacking off of that solicitation to meet our procurement requirement. And also, in addition, we are getting more favorable rates from Somerville. So the the hourly rates that they submitted to the City of St. Augustine are reduced rate sheet is significantly less.
So they give you two options. Well, that's, I think your question is, are you getting two options? Every two years is twenty-five thousand, every year is thirty-three thousand, based upon that bid.
So with that, but it won't be any.
What it's going to be is sixty thousand dollars minimum less or a hundred thousand less than anybody else, not counting the additional discounts that you're getting.
I get it. But that's just only be to the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, I think I can bring clarity.
No, 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 don't bring anymore.
Those numbers right there are based upon the total number of signals in the City of St. Augustine. Those numbers are not reflected.
Yours is based, yours is based, we're based on the rate.
We are going to be paying per signal. So those cumulative numbers right there are not reflected. What you really need to be focused on is the twenty twenty-two standard rate sheet. What we pay per hour for a signal check, what we pay per hour for emergency call out.
Which is going down based on what St. Augustine has. Any other questions?
I'm not, I'm not DOT certified either, so I like to get the understanding. Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number eight. We've already done item seven on the agenda. Item number eight, discussion in direction code enforcement staff modifying complaint-driven code enforcement process. Let's cut right here. Let's pass it until he comes back. Moving on to item number nine, discussing direction, seven twenty, St. John's Avenue reduction. Mr. Kennedy? As you recall, Mr. Kennedy is back. He was here a couple of weeks ago discussing this item. The contract date for the agreement ends on the twenty-eighth.
The twenty-sixth or the twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eighth. And so, Mr. Kennedy, you have an update for us today?
Yes, we are still seeking an extension of time, but I can share with you a few more facts even since the last meeting. And I do have Mr. McMahon here today. If you have any questions for him directly. But in addition to all the items we discussed at the last meeting where we hired a contractor, we've been hired an engineer and architect, done asbestos abatement. We've done some of the interior clean out of the buildings, but the shells still remain in a way to permit. We've been able to apply for a permit. Architect Robert Taylor, an engineer that he brought in with us, and Ed Mitchner is the contractor we hired. So we got a couple of locals and and then Mr. Rhodes from the next county over helping us get this project design and permitted. We just got comments back from the county permitting, and those were sent to the architect today. And he has informed me he's not working on Good Friday, so hopefully he'll have us set up by Monday so that we can move forward with permit. Clearly, we're not going to be done by April twenty-eighth at this juncture. But we believe that if we are able to acquire the permit in short order, we expect no longer than two to three weeks to finish demolition of seven twenty. I just want to put in there, you know, just for future, so no one's confused. We also, my client acquired the neighboring property seven fourteen, which was a similar state of disrepair, but not subject to code enforcement for whatever reasons. But anyway, he acquired it, and he will be demolishing that structure as well as part of this process. But he wants to start with seven twenties and sets the focus of the code enforcement. Get that done, and then we'll move straight into the seven fourteen building as well. So both buildings will be taken down in short order, but we want to get seven twenty done as quickly as possible. Just April twenty-eighth is going to be a little difficult at this point. So we're hoping we can get a little more time. And we're asking, once the permit is issued, again, we can get it done in two weeks, barring weather or any unforeseen conditions. So we want to ask for additional thirty days from the date the permit is issued to complete the demolition of seven twenty. That's what we're asking for, which would be a change to the the resolution that you adopted back in October.
Question, um, the terms of the reduction were initiated. This is based upon the recommendation from your client, correct?
This is, uh, something we worked out with Mr. Cutright prior to your October.
Based upon commitment from your client to get to this point? When were the permits requested?
Permits were only applied for at the end of March, but we spent first month and a half, uh, in acquisition trying to get the neighboring property acquired. And there's, you know, that may sound somewhat selfish or, you know, self-serving, but that property is one of the issues with why, when my client tried to get his permit back in seventeen and eighteen, it kept getting turned back because there's a shared wall that, and that overlapped and so they couldn't come to, uh, an understanding on that. So acquiring the property was key to, uh, resolving that issue in order to move forward with demolition.
And after that month and a half, what'd you do for the next three and a half months?
Well, uh, we did work on, uh, trying to find a contractor. We did, uh, client also, I'm, became the project manager a couple of months later when my client, uh, came down with COVID in the early part of the year. It's sidelined him for a, a little more than two months. He's still, he's back, but he's, and you can see he's, he's moving around. He's still not moving around like he did six months ago. So in some respects, he's had to rely on, uh, others to help him move this forward, including myself. And, you know, we just, we, we pressed at it as, as much as we could, as often as we could. A lot of it's been involved in, uh, discussions with engineers, architects, neighboring property owners. So there's been a lot of moving parts to try to get this thing, uh, moving forward. But we are proactively. Feeling it's just taking a little longer than we expect. And in the end, you'll have it cleaned up. The entire block there is gonna get cleaned up on that side of the road, so.
Are you asking for thirty-day extension from tonight or issuing a permit?
What we're asking for is thirty days from issuance of the permit. It'll be as soon as next week. But again, I, I spoke to Mr. Taylor on the phone before, uh, this meeting, and, uh, he hasn't had time to dig into it, but, uh, we, uh, will, uh, hopefully. Be able to answer it. Because the questions that they've raised are, to my mind, answerable. It's dealing with how we are gonna cordon off the road and, uh, prepare walls that are left behind. So we have answers for both of those. We thought they were already in the plans, so we need to clarify.
Any, any, any other comments from the commission at this point? Questions? I'm, I'm more, I'm interested now about the code violations at seven-fourteen as well, and why haven't they been bought up? And maybe, might be something that we also look at and address. But I want to know, uh, recommendation of staff.
So is, so are you planning to demo both of the, your client planning to demo both of the properties?
Yes, he only acquired the seven-fourteen and I think it closed in December. But he will make that part of the demolition. It's not, you can't, it's not said.
So when you, so when you requested the permit?
It's, we have, we have a separate permit for each. We have both those permits are.
So you already applied for both?
Yes.
Are we talking about demo permits? Is that what we're speaking of?
Yes.
So I guess if, if you don't mind, staff asking a question. Are the demo permits for these two buildings, do, with the demolition of these two buildings affect other structures?
They possibly could.
Well, earlier, I know there was, it's been a long time, but I know that you, and you referenced the fact that one of these structures has a common wall with the other. As I recall, now your client now owns both.
Yes.
And so my question basically is, is there a common wall between these two, either of these two structures and any other structure on the block?
Well, it's, it's, uh, I'll try to keep it as simple as possible. There are several shared, uh, shared isn't quite the right word, but this, this, these properties all butt up against each other one way or another. The problem with this one is, is, uh, some of the structure that my client is demolish- demolishing actually goes on to a neighboring property. So it's not a shared wall, per se, but the issues that are getting cleaned up butt up against a wall that's owned by another party. Uh, as well as, there is a, uh, and the church is behind us. It's a combination of both. And then with seven-fourteen, which is, you know, not necessarily part of this code enforcement thing, but there is, that one is probably, uh, more of a common shared wall. One of the, uh, solutions we have in the architectural solution is to, you can't really make heads or tails of it to take some of the materials off, to see what, how you, uh, resolve the shared wall issue. We have a plan, but that plan could change depending on what's uncovered during demolition, so.
But you plan to demolish both of the buildings, buildings that have these shared wall?
Yes, yes. But we're gonna leave, obviously leave the wall standing on. It's not, it's not really a shared wall. The, the seven-fourteen and seven-twelve and a half is called. The walls appear to butt up against each other. If they're separated, they're separated by an inch or two. Uh, that's probably the closest thing to a shared wall we have. Everything else is the wall, belongs to the church that's standing. What happened was the roof was just tied into the church's wall and, and again, it's, I don't wanna get into it, it's not like.
I guess I'm trying to figure out what's so complicated about getting a demolition permit if you're demolishing both of the buildings that have a shared wall. That, you know, is, maybe there's.
Well, there's other, there's other shared walls. There's other walls.
That's what I asked a few minutes ago.
Yes, I was trying to explain. There, there's a shared wall. There's, there's, uh, the wall's really belonged to the church and belonged to, uh, Alexander over there. Um, but so parts of this dilapidated structure actually carry over onto those properties. Parts of the church is on my client's property. So it's, it's a, in that respect, it's a law.
So the big, so, so if my memory serves me correct, the big issue was making sure that demolition of, of the, the, the subject building, I'll just say it that way, didn't create any additional code violations for any other buildings or create any, or do anything as it related to making those other buildings compromised?
Yeah, compromise or damage, that's correct. Obviously, we don't want them.
And so it has that issue. And so now we're talking about adding an entirely different building into the equation. So have we, so the question is, have we resolved the issue or convoluted, or made the issue more difficult?
Uh, I, I, I think it's been resolved, and that was in, along the lines of your thinking. Uh, the, the Blye Building, as we're calling it, seven-twelve and a half, the, the antenna building. That's a, it's a different issue, not related to the, uh, code enforcement property.
But you're marrying them.
Well, there, there are two separate permits, right? So we don't have to get seven-twenty done and move right into seven-fourteen. So, uh, but they're on separate permits.
But as you stand here today, you're asserting that you're gonna get seven-twenty done at the same time you get this one done?
No, seven-twenty will be done quicker than seven-fourteen. Seven, seven-twenty is the first thing on the list. We work our way into seven-fourteen. You know, we anticipate it will be with the next couple of weeks after seven-twenty is done, but, uh, because once he's there, we want him to stay there and just, and finish everything.
Can I ask another question? And so is there engineering or architectural work required in order for you to get the permits to demolish or to strike?
Correct.
Is that engineering or architectural work being done now? Is it under contract?
It's done. It's been submitted. We've got comments back. He's taking a look at those comments as we, well, he'll say Mondays when he's gonna get to them, because he's off tomorrow, but, uh, yes.
So do you have a anticipated time when you would be able to address the comments and get them addressed to the satisfaction of the, of the county who's issuing the permit?
I believe will be done next week.
You think you'll have your, your response from your architect or your engineer done next week?
Yes.
So you think you'll have a permit done in two weeks? Have a permit in two weeks?
Should have a permit within two weeks. That's, we hope sooner than that.
Good luck on that one.
Yeah, well, that's the other part of that equation.
No comment.
They are taking a little time, but, uh, to their credit, on this particular, uh, permit application, we are expecting four to six weeks listening to other contractors, and they did turn around their comments within two weeks.
Is this also tied into the, the, um, the, the Ark, the old Taylor building?
No, he's on the other side of
He's on the other side of the Blye Building?
Yep.
But are all those, are all those roofs tied in together?
In some way, shape, or form, they're, yeah, they're all butting up against each other. Whether they're truly tied in, I couldn't tell you.
So on the history against the backdrop here, as a frame of reference, the buildings are a very unique combination of things. We had the survey done recently, the property boundaries survey and so forth. And what we discovered is there's a wall on the church building that encroaches about a foot. On the former Angela's, Jeremys Building, there's about a three-foot gap between, on the, um, wall that we are close to each other, but we don't share. The walls we don't share, there's about a three-foot space between them. Jeremys is still unfinished block, and, and my building needs to come down. But the roof rafter went from my building.
They tie in.
Tied in, up at the elevation up there, but the walls on the survey are about three foot separate. In the back alley, the roof, there was, it was open in the alley between the church and the former Angela's building. And then somebody back in the day put a roof over there. And that's where the start of the problem came, because that roof collected water runoff from Angela's in the church. And that enclosed that alley. So over the last number of years, we've been, you know, back when John Key was alive, sending letters and Patrick prepared a little chronology for you. We made several efforts to get the demo permit to take down seven-twenty building. We actually got one, and then the city rescinded it. And so it's really unique in that the proper, the walls are independent, except a little bit for the Blye Building. I think there's a little joining there. But on the Angela Building, it's three foot apart, but the rafters are tight. So to answer this gentleman's query, the architect and engineer in this plant submitted, already went in end of March, they reviewed all of that, and the provision is, they believe for everything they can currently see, it's just disconnected the connection point, which is usually on the side of the building, because it moves to a different elevations and slopes. So they get removed, and then we patch up those finished walls where that connection. And that's what the architect is saying, that he can't give us all the details until that stuff is removed. But it's been five years-ish that we've had that property trying to get this resolution, and that's why we invested the money to buy the bar building. The six, or, or seven, seven-fourteen was because it just made it simpler and cleaner to clean up that whole mess, because you may know, probably do, that it was operated as a bar, sports bar, dance hall, whatever, and that went out of business. And then the owner tried to sell it and had several contracts on it. During the diligence period of each of those contracts, when they had termite people and different things, whatever structural go in, they realized the building isn't worth saving. So the owner lowered the price. We were able to negotiate a deal to acquire the seven-fourteen building, the old bar, because it made sense to clean up the mess, which is what I've been trying to do for a long time. Now, I noticed on the paper here, and I apologize for any confusion, but I think on one, it says, request a reduction. That when the commission assessed me a, a fine of ten thousand dollars, um, five and a half months ago, at this juncture, I'm not asking, just for clarification, for you to reduce that fine. I'm merely asking for more time to finish the mission, which is to get rid of seven-twenty, and we applied for both seven-twenty and seven-fourteen simultaneously as two separate building permits. And that's gone in. We got comments back in the last and just so you know, it's only the same two comments for each permit, and there's only two per permit, and one of them involves the more information on the fence to close off the sidewalk. So they're not horrific modifications. They're pretty straightforward. So that's why Patrick believes, and the architect believes, that it'll be a quick turnaround from this junction forward. And then as far as the demolition, that'll move forward.
And the, and the fine at the time was over three hundred thousand, right? What is the amount of the fine now?
Ten grand.
It was reduced. It was a conditional reduction, which we don't normally do.
So let me ask, so let me ask a question. I, I, I'm talking. I, I, I guess my I, I guess, I, I really have two questions. One is to the adjacent property owner, it looks like you got Ms. Alexander on both sides of this. You got Mr. Alexander on both sides of this demo?
Yeah, it's, yeah, Mr. Alexander was under contract by the Angela's Building, and we met several times and had great rapport, I think. And then I mentioned the Blye Building, and then he decided the Blye Building fit his deeds, and he moved forward and acquired the Blye Building. And I have text I could read here where my hope in the beginning and still is, is that Jeremy and Crystal end up with that whole run, and only in my mind makes sense for what their business plan is and so forth. And we've met a couple of times. We talked numbers. We did different things. We haven't come to a conclusion. I still hope that. But the short version is that he is on both sides, three-foot separation on one side, and we've got maybe a eight or ten-foot common wall that the architect can't really get into. That may only be a few inches apart, but it may have some sticks of wood to cross.
Mr. Alexander, are there any concerns at this point?
Yeah.
You would have to come forward. Take the name and address for the record.
Jeremy Alexander, one-thirty-four Timber Lane. I guess my main concern is that Bob Taylor should be familiar with that building more than anyone in this room. So for him not to know if it's one shared wall between seven-twelve and a half, as they're calling it, seven-fourteen, is puzzling to me. Number two, they asked me if they could have access to seven-twelve and a half to make that determination, and I said absolutely, and I never heard from Bob Taylor. So I think there's devils in the details with the semantics we're using here, but I could be wrong. I'm only familiar with one wall. Um, they seem to think there's two. They are still more than welcome to come check that out at any point in time. So obviously, when someone's potentially impacting the structural wall, um, I have some major concerns. I also have some concerns that I'm in compliance, continue to be in compliance, continue to maintain and improve my building, so how this impacts me long-term. Um, I have some major issues with some unexpected costs, obviously, and in my future, and who's gonna, who's gonna cover those is, uh, a major concern for my life. And I, we had a budget, we submitted that. I think everybody's seen it at this point. So yes, I have some concerns.
You, you have concerns with, with the, the demo piece and how it would leave?
Yeah, absolutely. There, I'm, I'm not familiar with the second wall between seven-twelve and a half, which is, they're referencing the Blye Building. And seven-fourteen, which was the former sports bar. They asked if Bob Taylor could come look to see if that's a shared wall, and I said absolutely, and haven't heard from Bob Taylor. The fact that Bob Taylor occupied that building for twenty years, um, he may already know the answer, but he's not here, and I, I can't speak for Bob Taylor.
Do we have what it would look like when you guys are finished? I mean, what you, with your architectural stuff, because if you say you got
slab, it's gonna be no walls, no, no, no plumbing or anything. But I'll say this, on the Blye Building, which really isn't the subject matter for the code enforcement, we're really about seven-twenty on that. But on the Blye Building, it, it does appear, and that's what our architect term, there actually are two walls, but they're very close to each other. And we're talking about leaving the wall, that's the bar wall, if you will, in place and putting flashing over top of that, and rather than try to pull it away from Blye Building. But again, it's, you know, you could be in that.
it's, you know, you could be in that building next door all you want, but you till you get up and take start taking it off, it's hard to see. I mean, I've been around it and it's hard to see where where the connections and or or don't occur. And there actually appears to be a little gap between the two walls. But again, that's it's something we in the in the call for in the plans. And one of the things that plans also call for is as we get to these key locations, the architect and or the engineer will come out, assess before we start yanking on anything, if you will, and and make sure the plan to move forward is gonna work. And then also come back and assess what needs to be done to repair what's left behind.
Like make make sure that there's the exterior wall that you move and leave his building separate, that that would be finished, it would be a finished product. That's what you're saying.
Well, one of the things that we've had a little bit of debate with Mr. Alexander about is what that we certainly would repair holes if there's attachments and whatever and they're, you know. It looks like the walls are separate, the main on the the east-west walls, if you will, are separate. There's a huge big gap of six inches. Mr. Alexander's wall is unpainted concrete block. And so there is a question, once that gets uncovered, that needs to be sealed from the weather. And we we have offered to put money towards that. But it's his wall and we don't want to be the painters and repair. We will repair our issues, but painting it and getting it sealed from the weather, we've offered to contribute money towards, we're still trying to sort that out. But again.
But isn't.
Certain repair damages, what what it needs to be make make.
Take these switch walls on.
I'm so confused. I done heard walls a million times and I'm just so confused.
You you should be because it is confusing.
If this is on the Angela side right here, right? What you're talking about is on Angela's side.
Yes.
Angela's wall, Angela's wall is roughly three feet.
But not from the building.
Well, yes, that's accurate. It's about three feet gap between the two buildings, except for the back of it where they don't have a wall, so they just put it up. Oh, no.
Yeah, the alleyway is basically two-by-fours. Put it up against the neighboring walls and a roof strapped to it. It's.
My. Yeah, my only concern is that when you guys do the demo, when you do the demo, it won't look nothing like when they invested in the building. And now they gotta deal with the finished piece and what would that look like and hoping that would not impact.
I I don't, I'm not sure this is the place to litigate that particular discussion, but we certainly are willing to work with Mr. Alexander. We we put a proposal out there, but we are certainly responsible, but you know, both parties bought the buildings with what's there being there.
Yeah, so I'm just used to a contiguous building.
So here's my thought. This is this issue gets more complex the more we talk. So my thought is, since you're gonna miss your deadline, and let's wait till you finish the project and bring this back. At the end of the day, then we can all see what it's gonna look like when you finish. And, you know, if you you're already out of compliance with your date, so if we're inclined to amend the agreement, because everything was contingent, this this thing, this seemed to be a contingent agreement based upon certain, you hitting certain compliance dates. You haven't hit those dates. And, you know, for whatever reason, you haven't hit those dates. Typically, what we do on code cases is we wait until you bring the property into compliance before we ever have a conversation about reduction. This in itself is odd. I think all concerns as it relates to aesthetics, all concerns as it relates to how certain things work. At the end of the day, I think it will be in your best interest to work as fast as you can and to make sure that it looks as good as it can. Because it sounds like the deal that was made is is the deadlines missed.
That well, that much. It's going to be missed. As I missed yet, but we're clearly it will be.
Unless you can make a seven-day miracle happen. So I am, I that's that's just one thought. And I don't know what's Mr. Cutright, what's staff's recommendation on this, Commissioner Jones?
Staff recommendations is, first of all, code enforcement, we want compliance. That's in in a nutshell, we want everything to be compliant and bringing it back to the nice, beautiful places. My concern is you're asking for extension on a date you don't have time when anything gonna get started. So like I was speaking earlier, you the this ends on April the twenty-sixth. So you have about maybe thirteen more days before anything become critical. You said you're gonna get the permit sometime next week. I think let's see where we have a start date on when all this work gets started and then look at what we can do about extending anything. But since your recommendation about coming back after everything's done and getting a assessment of that way, I'm okay with that. But I definitely need some definitive answer about when we're gonna start before I can say anything.
My recommendation is a starting point for discussion. It's not the end-all. But I I that was just what it was.
Mayor, my major concern is, before we can even talk about giving extension, let's see when the start date is gonna be for the work to be started.
And then that's why the that's why at this point, it's, you know, no extension, it's let's get it done. That's my thought process. And then we can see what happens because my thing is, if you come back in here and we're six months down the road, that's a problem.
So mayor is the was the original motion that resulted in the ten thousand dollar number in lieu of the three hundred thousand dollar number? Was that a contingent motion that indicated that the fine would be reduced to ten thousand dollars if the property owner met a certain milestone, that milestone being the acquisition of permits, demo permits? Was demo permits the operative event?
The demo permit was not in there. It just said if the if the deadline wouldn't meet the fine, we're reinstated back to the original total.
What's what was the event, though, that had to be achieved by the deadline?
Uh, uh, total compliance.
Total compliance?
By eight, by eight, it was.
Taking the building down.
Taking the building down.
It wasn't just acquiring permits, it was taking the building down. So and in the event the compliance wasn't achieved, the fine reverted back to three hundred?
Three oh five.
Three oh five, seven hundred and fifty thousand.
What?
Three hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and fifty.
So ultimately, I think what everybody wants is compliance more than anything else. And for this eyesore and problem that's been around for the longest to go away and to go away without creating any additional impact on the citizens who who are sandwiched on both sides, for lack of any other term. It just happens to now be the same person as as opposed to being Angela's on one side, it's it's no, it's no sailors. So I think the my biggest concern is my biggest concern is compliance. I I can't tell you that I'm a the delays are, I I am absolutely sympathetic to COVID. I can promise you I I I'm sorry you had to go through it and I can promise you it almost took me out and Commissioner Jones and a couple of us up here. We we are absolutely sympathetic to that. But 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 I I guess there's a there's a bit of a dead period in between that can't necessarily be accounted for. And that's the piece for me. I don't want to sit here and and come back and it'd be some additional delays in place. If it's gonna get done, then I I think time is of the essence as to how we do it. And also making sure that we're careful. That that's my concern. Are there any other considerations by the commission?
Those are my concerns as well.
My concern is consistent.
It's helpful for you and the commission if we buy in a more detailed timeline and chronology of what's happened in the last five and a half months in terms of initiating the survey, but the survey is busy for two weeks. Initiating this, but they're busy for three weeks. Not necessarily because I'm incapacitated for a while, Patrick's in cheating, but tradesmen that are necessary and required by the process are backlogged.
I get that. I mean, I get it. I get it.
So there was activity, I guess the the message I'd like to leave you with, I'd comment was, there was continuous activity in the last six months. It may not appeal that because sometimes you got to start and pause.
I mean, I I I get it, but I got an ass built in four weeks. I got an ass built drawn in four weeks. And, you know, I I I know that some tradesmen are backed up when it comes to certain things and there are other tradesmen that are still working. So I I I'm sympathetic to how the building trade is working right now. And even when it comes down to what if we were talking about acquiring materials, well, we're 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 in the realm of demo. And so it's 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 a bit of a different animal. But you've got to, the services of the engineer have to be enlisted, instructor engineer have to be enlisted. But just recently. Still four months out the front, but that's and and so I I get it. But at the same time, I'm also cognizant of the fact that there that there are some things that, you know, could have been done differently. At the end of the day, for me, again, I'll say it for the last time, I'm more concerned with what St. John's Avenue is gonna look like and what position the homeowners who've been, I mean, the property owners historically, who have had to deal with the issue are are gonna, what the outcome is gonna be for those properties? Because we know for the one property, there was, you know, there were complaints of water intruded into the property. We know there were some other issues that were concerned. There were some life safety issues that were concerned. And I I appreciate you continually moving forward with this process and even acquiring the adjacent building. But at the end of the day, we we've we've missed this boat. We're gonna miss it. We know we're gonna miss this boat. And we need to catch the next boat as quickly as we can so that this is taken care of from my standpoint and if the commission has any other concerns or directives, then I think this is the time for us to to really have that conversation and give direction to staff and and also so that you'll know what the, you know, what the temperature is at this point. And I think staff just said their their concern is compliance and they want to see this property come into compliance. So the commissioners will go around.
Speaking of boats, I would want to make sure on that next boat, it's not as long as it took us to get the boats that we have.
You said that because Miss Brown just left.
This piece, basically, you know, if if this does occur, we need to, I think we need to put a date in place so that it's just not some arbitrary date that's sitting out there. So we probably need to put a date out there that we we can come back and be busy.
I just don't think you're gonna know it because the reality of it is this permits, which once took two weeks, are now taking six, six weeks in some cases.
Understand, but if we if we put a date out there, we put a date out there, then whatever's happening in between those times, we we got another checkpoint versus just sitting and waiting.
If you take no actions, the fine reverts back to the former amount on the twenty six with no action.
Right, okay. Which is my point. We can, let's let's get it done, get it, let's get into compliance and then come back here. And then I think, you know, if he's operating in good, if we're operating in good faith and and this thing is done, then it's an easy conversation. Right. I think that's the easiest way. Counsel, I would like to say that we we just need to be consistent. You know, we adopted a policy of how much we were gonna reduce the liens. We made exception here already. We already see that the owner is not gonna be in compliance. I empathize with what have taken place. I understand about getting services rendered in a time and a fashion. We all suffer with that. But what we're gonna do is go go through this every time somebody else have the same issue. And we're gonna keep dragging it out, dragging it out. If you're not in compliance and it goes back to the original three hundred and five thousand dollars, you might be in a pickle where we say, well, it's fifty percent reduction and that's what our policy is. How are you gonna feel about that? I it's it's really a statement, it's really a statement, just that because it can't go that way. So in order for us to stay consistent with our own policies that we put out there, you already say you're not gonna make the deadline and we we understand that, but we keep having concessions to every every person that comes in. Then we go with our 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 policy and our own procedures are failing us. I was wanting to say that and put it out there. Do we have a legal opinion on it?
And I think that's why we're going back to saying that, you know, we understand that we made an exception, but we're going back to.
Right. Ma'am, Ms. Thomas.
Commissioner, as stated previously, the agreement was that if they come into compliance within the six-months period, it would be reduced to ten thousand dollars. And since they are going to fail to do that, the original fine should be reinstated. And then they can bring it back before the commission and can look at the policy and and the commission can decide whether they want to work within the guidelines of the policy or make some other decision.
How how Mr. Rawls get up here? He said a question I asked. I mean, he's not part of this.
No, he's got public.
Not too long ago, sorry, in fact, one hundred block. You had a similar issue in a way where you had an agreement with the developer and it didn't come into compliance, it didn't meet the terms of the the sale of the one hundred block. And there was a concession made and and I I I don't know if there was, there was money that was put up in the form of a bond, like a cash bond. And I'm just wondering if that might be an option where the city could receive the ten thousand dollars and put that at risk and give him a specified period of time. And that money comes off the table, but it's it's been done before and I think you would be consistent in your past practices at that point. But I just from my two cents as a citizen, sitting back there, I'm sitting there thinking, you know, if you reinstate that three hundred thousand dollar fine and I own that property, you're stuck with it. I'm gonna walk away from it and you're gonna look at it forever. I personally wouldn't want to have that happen. I I think Mayor Hill's right. The St. John's Avenue deserves this, you know, get a get a carrot, put it on a stick, put it in front of him. And if it means leveraging his his money to hold him accountable, I I would think that would be a plausible option. It's been done in the past.
I appreciate your comment on that. However, you know what happened? That happened prior to us making our policy to only reduce it to fifty percent. So that one hundred block, that decision, that when that was made, I don't recall what you were even talking about, but that was done prior to us going to code enforcement and and actually implementing the policy that we have now, which we had to turn.
I I I I understand exactly. I I sit in your seat with the county.
Yeah, so.
And then we do the same thing. As a commissioner, what what I want to see is, like Mr. Cutright said, we just want to see compliance. We want to see our county or our city get cleaned up, get rid of the blight and move forward. But I'm just saying this is critical operation, which is what you do that maybe think outside the box, come up with a way that you could leverage his money, hold it accountable or ma- make you put up some sort of a payment bond and.
Well, maybe if we, I, you know what, since you're gonna be a spokesperson. So maybe if he comes up with maybe the maybe a hundred thousand dollar as far as the fine, the lien, if we reduce it to that, you get what I'm saying? I I hear what you're saying, but it's gonna continue to happen, Jeff. We'll have a problem that we can't control if we don't.
I don't want to, the fine should be punitive, but they they should be in in line with, I'm just, just, it's a simple, it was just a simple suggestion. I'll drop the mic.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming. All right, um.
I lean I lean on legal and the subject matter expert in the enforcement side of this matter and I side with them and that's my opinion.
Counsel.
Sir, as I previously stated, the property owner has the opportunity to come back in front of the commission and ask for a reduction in the lien. And the commission has the authority to act within the guidelines of the within the parameters of the guidelines, or they can make it another decision that would be acceptable to them.
If you did that. If you did that, if I might speak, it gives you the opportunity to take into account factors that you aren't aware of right now. I E. The cost he incurs in taking these buildings down. Right now, you have no idea what that's gonna be. I doubt he does. So, if you, what, if you go ahead and just let the process play out, let the fine revert back to what it would revert to under your original motion. Let him bring it into compliance, and then let him come back and provide you with the information at that point that would include the cost he incurred in demolishing. You'll then know what it looks like too. You'll know what the end result is. And then you can make a determination, in my opinion, and inform determination about the equities of the situation. So, I agree with counsel that, that, that would be the most appropriate way to move forward.
Need to hear from Mr. Cutright still? Need to hear from Mr. Cutright?
So, we agree with, we agree with what he's saying, because that's in line with what.
Cutright, counsel, city manager slash legal.
So, a- at, at this point, after, oh, oh, read it, I let you come like I was. You sat over one of these seats before, time or two. A few of these seats. You've sat in a few of these seats. Again, I, I think the motivation for the commission is to see St. John's Avenue look better. And I think if that, if that happens, then we'll take it into consideration. And I think, I think that's gonna be a, the, the best option, because there, there's too many unknown variables at this point, from, from the timeline to everything else. And I, I, I think it's gonna be beneficial for the community as a whole, for this property to be cleaned up, both of them, because the, even the bar is fat, it's going down quickly. It has gone down quickly. I won't say it's going down quickly. And the other properties that I saw at this point, and I, I think it's gonna be beneficial for all of us to see those properties cleaned up. For me, my main concern again is compliance. I think this commission's main concern is to see compliance more than anything else. I think consistency is always a consideration as it moves forward, but the compliance for me is, is, was paramount. So at this point, if we're not gonna take any action, and we're gonna wait for, for, for a request for this to come back on the commission, we can just give someone, give me, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to take no action at this point.
So moved.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. My commissioner McCaskill's in the front of the discussion on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ball's motion carries and then.
Mr. Mayor noted for the record that Mr. Jones was pre- was not present for the vote.
However you wanna do it. Thank you. Look forward to sending you back soon.
Mayor, we have to go back to option, I mean, item eight.
I got you. We're gonna go back. Mr. Cutright. Complaint driven, modifying the complaint driven process. Let me take this. Where are you gonna take it? Just don't take too much of it.
I'm not coming on that one. Me and the city manager have been conversating about this for a while, uh, and we are, when we first took over code enforcement, we was learning the game and trying to figure what's going on and put stuff in place. Uh, we have came to a place now where I think we're comfortable where we can try to start being a little bit more, um, proactive, proactive driven. Just the other day, man, Mr. Green office, we rode around the city and just quick looks, we sent about thirty-five to forty, uh, violations that we can hit immediately. If we had a little bit more proactive, then we could push the button on, uh, so I think. But I think with, uh, putting some policies in place to make sure we govern ourselves with the city, I think we could actually, uh, move this city into forward.
Keep going.
Okay.
You continue.
Moving forward with, uh, fixing, uh, some of the major blight issues and safety concerns. Uh, my main concern right now, even though, uh, we're trying to do proactive, I wanna hit safety concern builders, abandoned builds and structural issues and stuff that we can become a major issue if we have damages or have accidents inside those buildings. So that is why I'm coming here to try to get permission to try to hit those more than anything. I'm not trying to hit the low hanging fruit as much as I am trying to get the safety problems that we have going on.
But you wanna have the discretion to build a new book.
Correct.
So you've heard status recommendation as it relates to modification to, like, to the complaint driven process? Is there any further conversation from the commission?
Complaint driven, he'll, it is gonna be more proactive, that's what I'm hearing.
He wants to modify the complaint driven process and, and, and go back to the, go back to the proactive process. And basically revert back to the old language in essence, right?
What, just to add on to that, Commissioner Born, when we first took over, we had a lot of people coming in, uh, complaining on the, the, the citizens, but since then, we have had a stalemate on there. A lot of people saying that I'm not gonna police on my friends, I'm not gonna snitch.
Right.
Uh, so and so, so we have properties that we see, and I'm pretty sure we have had conversations about this, that we wanna bring to attention, but right now we're complaint driven, so we really cannot initiate anything on those properties until we get somebody to come in and complain about it.
Just put my name on it.
I, 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 I support Mr. Cutright in code enforcement and the method that he's trying to, uh, reestablish. Because it is, and we've heard citizens complain about, you know, we, if you see something, say something. But if we're not seeing something, saying something, or doing something, how can we tell them or ask them to do it? So, uh, they, his, his staff have done a good job. Uh, we have seen some improvements. And, uh, I applaud you for wanting to take that on and actually, uh, take the initiative of actually tackling the blight as well. So, uh, I'm, I fully support.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
In a second.
Supposedly on the floor to allow staff to initiate code cases, and we'll bring forth the final language. We'll bring that back at a later date. Supposedly on the floor to second, my commissioner Born, is there any further discussion on the motion? Questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries and then, thank you, Mr. Cutright. Next up is our financial report and budget update fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, as of March twenty twenty-two. Ms. Shane.
I am happy to report that we are on track in general fund as far as revenues that are collected. We are keeping an eye on fuel expenses. That's something that we receive weekly, and we will keep you apprised of anything that we're concerned about, but at this time, we're not. For airport, we are on track as well. We are closing out some grants in that fund. Utility fund, we're also doing very well on collections. Um, golf course, doing very well as well. Um, we are actually trending, um, to receive additional funds back this year. Sanitation, as you know, we, uh, this quarter did buy a fire truck, or sorry, not a fire truck, a garbage truck, um, because it caught on fire. Um, and we were actually able to recover some of those funds through our insurance reimbursement. Um, TIF, one of the major changes, we did move some money from reserves for that building improvement grant program. I did notice tonight that I did leave off the ARPA fund, which is a new fund that we've set up. Um, I will make sure that next quarter I include that on here, but I will also send you out an email and update on that one as well. We did place the order for the SCBA equipment, and, um, I don't have an update on the order status, but I'm sure she's gonna get that to you if you needed it. And do you have any questions on any of the funds?
I do. Uh, can we, I mean, next quarter, is there any way we can get that, that, uh, spending for op funding or on the op fund a little sooner than that?
Yeah, I'm gonna email it out to you.
Oh, um, and I was looking at the line I was on the sanitation department, and I'm looking at year-to-date. I think year-to-date is one million, their budget is one million nine hundred seventy-four thousand one twenty-six dollars. And year-to-date, they're already at, what is?
Month five.
Month five, month five, month, month four, and they're, yeah, one, one seventy-four, one, one million seventy-four nine seventy-nine. So, so projected for next, are we talking about projection for next budget, fiscal budget year?
To the end of this year.
No. Are you talking about the budget column? Budget column is what was adopted this year. Year-to-date column is what has been spent year-to-date.
Right, so what I wanna do is, is point this out where they are right now, so when we are making the budget for next budget year, we're gonna have to increase that budget. We know that, right?
No, we, we're in, it's only about a little over.
You don't know if the spinners gonna soften, but in the year with the finish.
You're seven months into the budget.
Yeah, oh, I forgot, I'm, I'm thinking. Cause I said month, I said month four, you're right. Disregard that.
We're about, yeah, we're about sixty percent.
Right.
I make one mistake a night, there. All right.
Yeah, I'm gonna got you at two. I gotta have more.
Well, when you up there just sleeping, you, you're catching me right now.
So we're running close. I mean, we're, we're, we're running close projection is where we are.
We are, we're on, we're trending, um, but I'm very happy to report that I'm seeing a great increase, um, as far as airport and golf course. And I'm very happy to report on that, given the fact that typically general fund gives a loan to those two funds at the end of every year.
All right, thank you. Any other question?
Got a, also, we, we have went into reserves to make a few.
That's what you were gonna add? You talked about to reserves.
Yeah, make a few purchases. Well, how, how you feel about that? What over there? How do you feel personally? The professional opinion? Hey, need to know.
I don't make the decision to pull from reserves. You do.
That's not a question. How you feel about the stats where we are and the trend that we're doing? I mean, I need to know that.
We're above the required sixteen to seventeen percent, so I'm still comfortable with our reserve balance.
What is the number? What we at right now?
Um, I can get you that number. I don't have it written down, so I'll send that in my email when I send out the ARPA funds as well.
Okay, you have any next report for our next meeting?
Yes.
Appreciate it, thanks.
I'll have it next week.
All right, Commissioner Jones, are you gonna, are you gonna make a motion to accept this report?
Motion to accept the report.
Thank you.
So motion on the floor, second by Commissioner McCaskill in front of discussion on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Next up, long conversation on repaving streets within the city. Repave an eighteen street from Washington Street to Napoleon Street, and the estimate is thirty-seven thousand dollars for. So, Mr. Griffith.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, previously, there was some discussion about, uh, some of the roads in the city that are showing some age and some fatigue. Um, specifically, the, uh, intersection of Washington and North Eighteenth came up. Uh, staff reached out to a contractor we had previously used to get a quote to millinery surface of two block run in that area. That quote came back at approximately thirty-eight thousand dollars. Also included in your packet, uh, we ran a report, um, from our pavement management software and listed all the road segments that have a fatigue rating of medium to high, just for your reference. Uh, we did take a look at the Better Place Reserves, which is the fund that is, uh, typically used for resurfacing in capital projects. You're sitting at, and I just put that back here, nine hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. But please be reminded that we do have multiple large capital projects that are about to go to bid. Specifically, St. John's Avenue, Mosley to the railroad, St. John's Avenue from the railroad to Fourth Street. And we are consistently seeing overruns in these projects, uh, based upon inflation. So this is here for your discussion and direction to staff. Mr. Holmes, do you have anything to add?
Just question, the area that you're, that you've identified, is that going to be an area that would be reconstructed under the raise grant?
Yes, this area is scheduled to be repaved with the raise funds in approximately two to five years.
It's bad.
Sir?
It's really bad. It's bad, it's bad now. And all the way down to Wapala, which is something that I discussed with Mr. Griffith as well. You, you can actually see the, uh.
Can you go down, zoom in, please, at the area at least?
You can, if you're on Google Maps, you can see the, the, you can see the spot on Wapala.
Yeah, I'm not arguing against, I'm just saying that this will be, will be, you'll be re- you'll be reconstructing this road along with, including, along with installing water lines under the raise grant, which somewhere in the two to five year timeframe. So I understand that there may not be time, you may not be able to wait that long. I get it. I'm just saying, I want everybody to understand that, that this is part of the project for the raise grant.
Yes, that's the area I'm.
Good on the eighteenth, and, okay, we had the eighteenth and, uh, Ocean Street right there, that intersection. And we have done nu- numerous of patches in this area. Clear, on the side. It has to be at least a hundred patches in that area. Matter of fact, there's a, a sinkhole in that road. It has to be taken care of. It's not, uh, uh, optional, I think. And the reason why I mentioned about reserves, we go into reserves to do other project.
I think you're preaching to the choir. Everybody's on page, everybody's on board with you.
Right, so, um, I just wanted to make that, that case, and you're right, nobody said not to do it.
Everybody's on board, let's just lay down.
So, thirty-seven thousand, hold on, that's another street as well that's not on here, but we did talk about it, uh, Commissioner, I just wanted to, and it is on, uh, nineteenth and Eagle Street where, uh, Evan's Church is, and it is a bad area right there. And again. Yes, so, uh, and, and, and we don't have the estimate on it, but I would like to, uh, press it from the commission that we do get an estimate on those two areas as well, and try to take care of them while we out there doing.
So the reason he gave you the estimate on these two blocks, and so you would have an idea what the cost would be for any additional blocks. So, that was why that estimate was given at thirty-seven thousand for two blocks, so you kinda get an idea that you'd be around eighteen-five per block to go in and pave those streets.
So if it was asking me for direction,
I'll let you finish.
As one person, I mean, I was, yeah, that's the, that's the area there. Oh, not to be disrespectful. But, but those, those areas right there.
It's almost eight thirty in Alabama now, but.
Well, that's okay. I mean, I sat here and I wasn't a storm, and I just wondered, because of the fact that we have had people come in and talk about these streets. And, uh, those areas do need attention. And, 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 and Mr. Griffith agreed as well as, uh, Mr. Holmes, they both, both been out there. And it's, I guess it's just a matter of where we're gonna put the money. So, I, I'm not saying that nobody didn't agree. I think we all agreed, but, um, it, it's important that sometime people actually see those areas that need attention as well. So, I would like to also add that area, that's what I'm saying, into this resurfacing project.
Better place playing. Can we also pull from the ARPA, ARPA funds for that area now? Okay, so, infrastructure?
Let's. So, here's just food for thought. The raise grant's gonna come fast, and you think it's gonna come. I mean, it seems like it's way off. You're gonna be repeating a lot of stuff. The suggestion is, my, my suggestion is, when we look at these streets, the streets that can be patch paved at this time, if we know we're gonna be doing total street reconstruction, let's get rid of the stuff that's gonna put us in a position where we're gonna end up with these claims for tires and wheels and all this other stuff. And, you know, at, that's, that's patch paved, or whatever we're gonna do, we know we're coming back, putting in full infrastructure, and we're, we're gonna be paving and doing. and we're, we're gonna be paving and doing a total streets project, but. We can go around this city and name a million streets that need to be paved, and at the end of the day, there's a whole bunch of streets that got bricks up underneath of them that are starting to fail, and it's all around. I, I think, when you look at intersections like this, when you look at what's going on, those two blocks are bad almost throughout the entire block. The intersection of Wapala and Eighteenth is horrific, and it dips probably twelve inches down in a big spot. And so, you know, when it shows up on Google Maps, you know it's bad. And so, I think that what we can do is this, that, let's hit what we can, and while we got the crew mobilized in the general vicinity, and then let's look at the other stuff, and like, at Wapala, I think the biggest thing is the intersection. So it may be a situation where we can, we can, we can patch pay the intersection and, and get rid of that sinkhole that's there, no differently than what you got at the intersection of Nineteenth and, and, um, Nineteenth and Eagle.
Yeah, most of my intersection, uh.
Part of that's because of drainage, right?
So if we could.
Is it typically the failing drainage that was leading to those areas?
Typically, what happens is you get a potable mainline break, the ground becomes saturated with water. When they do the repair, you can't get density or compaction, and it dries out over time, and then the depression, you know, increases.
And that's why we keep getting that right there at Eighteenth and Napoleon, right there?
Yes, and be advised, if we went in and we patched this, there's still a chance the water line break, break again until we come back through with the RACE.
Right, 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 okay.
My thing is, let's, you know, let's get the problem fixed, but let's not throw a whole bunch of money putting a bandage on something that we know we gotta come back and rip up, because then we look crazy again. So, we're entertaining motion to this thing?
Motion to approve.
We need to, what do we approve?
Out.
There was item, item, uh, eleven, right?
Can we?
The direction and discussion, we're talking about spending the funding, thirty-seven thousand for.
So you just wanted to two blocks?
No, to include. Also to include in the section of, uh, Mayor said Wapala and Eighteenth, and I, I requested Nineteenth and Eagle, just the intersection. Like you said, those are the, the worst areas right there, what's causing, uh, the risk and, uh.
Thirty-seven was for two blocks. So the intersection shouldn't be, shouldn't be as much. It could be.
Mayor have something to add, sir? Thank you, Mr. McEnroe. I've, I've got a document in front of me where we have previously highlighted where the potable lines have been replaced. If you're talking about adding locations where you may not be, you know, coming back and redoing some of that work, or you may not be tearing it back up for a mainline break, Nineteenth Street has already been replaced, uh, so we could look at doing a patch, uh, at that intersection. Um, North Eighteenth, uh, the sections that we're talking about has not. Um, so if you're talking about it doing a two-block run, even though there's only a couple spots, not the whole run, you're increasing the odds that you may have to cut into, you know, new pavement, and it would be wasted funds. Can you, and the other question was, uh, Wapala?
Wapala, Wapala Eighteen?
Yeah. Give me Wapala.
Wapala was replaced, but it's also one of those areas where they did not remove the old lines, so there's still a chance that it could break.
Yeah.
So, so question is, um. Can you, are you able to give us an updated estimate for patch, for patch paving on that Eighteenth Street?
So if the commission was able to give us the specific locations that they wanted to replace, we'd still have to go back out for an ITV, which we have it prepackaged, so we can get it on the street fairly quickly. Um, so we'd be back before you for a ward of that ITV and for a budget amendment, probably in about thirty days.
I think since consensus that we do realize that those roads need attention. The, the areas that you've already, we've already identified, we take care of, let's give the okay for those, and consideration or have him get estimates for the other ones that we have identified, but I don't wanna hold up or impede in process, pro- progress.
He's getting invitation to bid for, for those areas.
Yeah, okay.
Based on the motion, so.
Also, I, I want to mention again, uh, in this packet, um, it's eighty-three streets that have been identified.
He missed two.
Pardon me?
He missed two.
He missed two on this, on this, uh, in this package, as soon as I pulled him up. And none of them that we're talking about or mentioned are on this list. And that's, that's thirty out of the eighty-three. So when it was gonna be scheduled to be done, I don't know, but it's not, neither one of the streets that we have named are on it. So, when we start saying that it's somewhere to be done within the next two to five years, we don't have a definitive date, and we don't know, but we do know that those roads are in bad conditions. We gotta talk about our EMS and our law enforcement that go down there, and, uh, have to pick up people in those kind of conditions as well. So we're talking about a safety issue as well, and not with just a citizen, I talk about, uh, emergency vehicles going down those roads, so. Just wanna point it out.
Anything else, Commissioner?
No, your honorable mayor, appreciate that.
Thank you. Is your motion on, Laura?
Mission on board, I think you were starting a motion.
Yes, I wanna go ahead and make a motion, but are we amending that motion, or we're going with what we currently have?
You didn't get a chance to finish saying it.
Men.
It was, it was kinda.
Okay.
You were stopped midstream.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, um, item eleven as written, and the amended, um, roads, we had, I think, Nineteenth and Eagle, I think Wapala and Eighteenth. Was there any of them?
That's it.
Okay, and those, those are the areas that we, uh, would like to.
You also mentioned Eighteenth and Ocean.
Yeah.
And I'd like to mention, there's one mid-block on North Eighteenth, just south of Ocean, that's why we grabbed the two-block run.
Well, he, he, he covered your, your whole, your two-block area. In the original, he covered the two-block area and added two intersections.
I'll be quiet now.
And included Eighteenth and Ocean as well.
So he covered your, so the motion, so the motion is, the motion is to approve, uh, Eighteenth from Washington to Napoleon, plus Eighteenth and Wapala, and Eight, and Nineteenth and Eagle.
Right.
Motion on the floor, second by Commissioner McCaskill, is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose motion carries unanimously, thank you. And item twelve, which is the purchasing policy, um, it's been pulled from the agenda, uh.
Oh, pull.
We're pulling item twelve, uh, just, can I just get a motion to table till the twenty-eighth?
Motion to table.
Second.
This was from the floor, and second, all in favor, say aye. Oppose motion carries unanimously.
Mayor, before we, before we move forward, can we also make sure that, because it was my understanding that the vehicle, um, policy was supposed to be brought to us tonight as well, can we make sure that we have that policy on the next meeting as well?
Thanks, Commissioner Campbell, cause I had it on my list.
For the twenty-eighth?
Yeah, it wa, it was pull, um, a meeting ago, or two meetings ago, and we wanted to have that, Commissioner Jones, that.
I think.
Is that gonna be ready to come back by then?
Did you get your report?
Is that gonna be ready to come back?
Yeah, I, discussion happened.
Alright, item number thirteen, public hearing, TBK's twenty-two dash zero seven, annex rezoning, uh, point four-four acres from Putnam County Act, is city residential one AR one A zoning, twenty-five twenty-nine Hudson Avenue.
Thank, thank you, Mayor Hill, ordinance number twenty-two-two-two, and ordinance of the City of Placa, Florida, annexing into the corporate limits of the City of Placa, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as twenty-five twenty-nine Hudson Avenue, Placa, Florida, three two one seven seven, part of the southwest quarter, the southeast quarter, official records, book three three four, page fifty-three, contiguous to the boundaries of the City Placa, Florida, providing for scribbled reserves, providing for an effective date, sir.
Don't move. Second.
This was motion on the floor, a second. Now, for public hearings, anyone here for public hearing? Seeing not one, closed public hearing, is there any further discussion on annexation or events? All in favor, say aye. Oppose motion carries unanimously, moving on, the rezoning ordinance is twenty-two dash zero four, second reading.
Thank you again. Ordinance number twenty-two-two-two-four, ordinance of the City of Placa, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the City Placa, Florida, be amended for Putnam County Agricultural, the City Placa Residential R one A for the following property, twenty-five twenty-nine Hudson Avenue, Placa, Florida, three two one seven seven, part of the southwest quarter, the southeast quarter, official records, book three before page fifty-three, providing for severability, providing for scribbled reserves, and providing for an effective date.
There's motion on the floor, and a second. Public hearing. Anyone here for public hearing? Seeing not one, closed public hearings, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries unanimously, moving on, City Manager's administrative reports.
Mayor, the only thing I would mention is, uh, at this point, that I referenced earlier to the fact that we had had, uh, interviews for filling of the Fire Marshal Assistant Chief position. Mr. Chad Branford was selected in that process, and he's here today, and actually, I think he's already assumed the position of, uh, Fire Marshal Assistant Chief of the Fire Department. I also wanted to mention one further thing, uh, airport was mentioned earlier, and actually, the airport is doing really well at this point. Or, in no, in no small part due to Mr. Yul McNair, who's the new airport manager, Mr. McNair's mother died. It was last, it was last week. And, uh, he has, um, taken, uh, leave to, uh, attend to her and, uh, services in Mississippi. So he's away, and, uh, we've, I've been maintaining contact with him. Uh, it's, uh, uh, even though she was in her eighties still, as anyone who's lost their mother knows, it's not something that, uh, it only happens once in your life, as to your, your birth mother, so have your prayers and thoughts with him if you would.
Anything else, Mr. Holmes?
No.
So Griffith, anything else? Don't seem so excited.
It's some mixed of good news and bad news. I just wanted to make the commissioners aware, and some of you may have already noticed, that, uh, Public Works, uh, Streets and Sanitation specifically are coordinating what we like to call kind of a clean sweep, they're working around the city in zones, they do some right-of-way work and bulk waste pickup. Um, usually, it's done, you know, once a year in coordination and preparation for festival season. Uh, but I think, uh, they are, uh, completing the north side zones, uh, right now. Um, and be advised that we are still without our sweeper, um, it's in the shop, uh, undergoing repairs. Uh, so we will be contracting for those services over the next coming months.
It's pretty new sweeper, ain't it? It's pretty new, we just.
About six years old, sir.
Oh, well, I know we bought it when I've been on.
It was bought when you were pretty little.
In, in my opinion, it's still very new. Yeah, the, the pony motor is supposedly still under warranty, so we're still, uh, working with the supplier on that, and hopefully, we'll be able to make a claim and, uh, not be out of pocket. I just have a question with regards to that, and it's probably.
Commissioner Jones?
I'm sorry.
You know.
With that issue with garbage collection today, I, I received, you texted today about.
I didn't get any reports from Mr. Chandler, sir, it is a short week, uh, so a lot of people don't get the notification, or they forget that they gotta get it out a day in advance, uh, because Thursday, Fridays, Thursday, Friday gets moved up to Wednesday, Thursday. Um, usually, when that happens, we try and accommodate people as best we can if they call into the office while we're still there.
So, Thursday or Wednesday? Yeah, but if you call, they'll, they'll, they'll usually come up. Wish Cam.
So, going back to the sweeper, are, are vehicles being maintenance the way that they're supposed to, to prevent some of these things that's happening? I know even with the garbage truck and things of that nature, um, are we really on a maintenance schedule to kind of combat some of these breakdowns, or?
So, Commissioner, um, I've just gotten back into Public Works recently, I'm not prepared to give you a full report on that. I can tell you that I am specifically looking at the sweeper, um, and the garbage trucks because of the most recent incidents, uh, but I, I'm not ready to report on that tonight, sir.
Well, I would, wouldn't want you to have the ability to do that assessment, I would definitely want you to bring that back to us, or if, even if it's been off, getting us back to some kind of routine maintenance to avoid these big blowouts. Seems like when it goes down, it really goes down, so.
You're looking at, you're looking at daily logs and things of that nature, just to see the checks that come.
Uh, our drivers are conducting the pre-trip and inspections, um, I can't tell you if we're doing audits on those, uh, to make sure that they're truly conducting the pre-trip inspection. Um, again, we do have to trust, um, you know, our employees, and some of them start work about six or seven hours before we do. Um, but we are looking at the possibility of employing some existing software that we're paying for with the GPS tracking. Uh, there is additional ways of actually documenting, uh, the maintenance on the vehicles using that Verizon Fleetmatic software. It's not currently being used, uh, but it's something that hopefully we get to put in, or will be able to put in place soon.
Do, do we have like, we don't have nothing in place like business continuity where if, uh, uh, a critical truck or whatever goes down, that we have like a lease agreement or rental agreement maybe to, or insurance that covers, say we can get another sweeper to.
We have known vendors in the area that supply that service on a contractual basis, and when we need them to come in, we contact them for quotes, sir. That's all I have.
Where are the boats?
What's the address, where'd Marshall go? St. John Shipbuilders.
So the most recent, the boat that we've most recently received, um, did not pass its stability test in terms of, uh, its capacity to carry the specified number of passengers. It, uh, is gonna require additional ballast. Um, so they're going to be making the calculations to determine the amount of additional ballast required, and adding that ballast to the boat in order for the boat to be able to, to hopefully pass the stability test that makes it serviceable.
I wanna be on that boat. I got a question, will it, will it, will it sit, will it sail in the water by itself without tipping over?
I hope not.
It's actually floated down the river so far.
So. It's, it's, the boat passed a stability test with a number of people on it less than its desired maximum. So it, it did not pass with the required or the desired maximum, and that's been something that, you know, we've been concerned about from day one, because that boat, Mayor will tell you, I asked that question, we went to look at the boat before, it was even, because they took out two large electric motors, which are heavy, and a boatload of batteries, and a generator, and replaced it with two small diesel engines. So there's a whole lot of weight that went out, and, uh, the question that I asked early on was, have you guys done weight and balance on this, so you know what the effect of changing all of that is going to be? And we were said, we were told that they had.
So this is, the boat is gonna, the, the corrections or the fix that you said, um, needs to be done, will it go back to the people who originally, or someone else?
They're doing it here.
Yeah.
It's at, uh, St. John's Shipyard. Well, St. John's isn't doing it, but supposedly, we're still, it's still being done by Mr. Cunningham. Or his crew. Sir.
Just, I mean, it's just being done locally, and it's been done in Putnam County as opposed to, like, in Leesburg.
Yep.
So, but the question came up over a year ago from Mr. Holmes, while we were there doing the site inspections. So I hated to bring that up, but I thought it was time to go ahead and get an update. Contract negotiations as it relates to.
Have a contract and waiting signature, and they'll be, hopefully, when they have a boat, they can operate, they'll start.
Alright, Ms. Walsh.
Good evening, I'm talking to you on some of the activities that we've been working on. Since January one, we've worked on fifty-five different cases that would have come in. Thirteen of those are, uh, historic preservation, twenty-one of them are building permits. Fourteen of them are planning board-related car, cases, and there were five zoning verification letters. New housing in the area. Since January one is eight, is about ten units that have come in, last year in twenty-twenty-one, there were fifteen single-family residences and nine mobile homes that came in.
Mobile homes in Cedar Park?
Mobile homes, yes.
Oh, we had an ordinance.
Our four permits, mobile homes, most of those went into Viking Estates. Viking Manor, Viking Manor. Couple of the big projects that we've got going on, the cottages should be breaking ground pretty soon.
It's a hundred and ninety-five units.
One ninety-five.
Yes.
Four.
One ninety-four.
Excuse me.
One ninety-four.
Mister Holmes, we have to add the other one now.
Sixty-one thirty-one Krill, which is a hundred and fifty rental apartments, they are still in their research and design stages. Plants of Ruskin is moving along, they've got hiring up on their website, hiring positions open on their website. Also, several renovations throughout the city on other commercial properties, including Wendy's, Taco Bell, and there's a new Scooters. Scooters drive-in, Scooters Coffee.
Coffee?
Coffee. And then, lastly, with some help of Jonathan's team, we submitted three grant applications for some planning projects on Monday.
Can we get the report, like, like that report that you just read off, can we get like a, a report on stuff like that, that's really good news?
We also met with the developer of Villa Farms, who's, I guess by now closed on an additional eighty acres, and he's going to be expanding his Villa Farms project in the very near future.
Which direction, west?
Towards Saint John's?
Towards north and, yeah, north and east, Saint, towards Saint John's Avenue from, yeah, from, from twenty.
One moment, I just want some clarification from Commissioner Borum, when you say you want an additional report, would you like me to put it in, into an email to you, is that what you're asking for?
That's a good report, what you just put together with all the stats.
Just wanted to share that to you, share it with you in a written form.
Yeah, that's, that'd be great, if we get a report like.
Okay, got it. Yes, sir, Mister Jones?
Your mic's not on.
Right down seventeen, New Doughnut Shop, across from McDonald's. Okay, so maybe it's a question for.
Question for.
Traffic control, whatever, but you have cars lining up.
It's.
Going into the place.
Yes, sir.
So it must be have great, it must have great doughnuts, but is that an issue, is that a issue that we would deal with, with the, with the traffic on the road? Has that been addressed when they opened up, where are we with that?
They do have a short stacking lane on their property, and I have been in touch with the owner, last month, we, we spoke at length, and we agreed that he would be going to an engineer to look at some solutions, including making a longer stack lane throughout his property, making the driveway longer. And possibly, I told him, I said, you've got to move people through there faster, man.
I don't know, yeah, it's a matter of something happening, somebody in on those cars. I just wanted to know, because I, I had, again, I called, I don't know if the chief, I got called, fire chief, that, that is something that.
Right, they're stacking out onto the, yeah.
Yeah, so, that's why.
They've addressed, they've started addressing it here. I think everybody realizes that it's a potential. The doughnuts are good.
Delicious.
Anything else, Ms. Walsh?
No, sir.
Mr. Cutright? Oh, you do? Go tight, let's go ahead, Mr. Cutright.
Always tighten up, tighten up, just a few little things I want to put out, I sent an email out earlier about what we had going on this weekend, we have the class of seventy-six doing a food drive, Farm Show Food Drive at Jenkins tomorrow morning, from zero eight-thirty until the food run out, so please come out and try to, yep. It's not a city event, but if you want to come out and support, you can, we also have a wonderful debut of our Easter Bunny this Saturday, it's called Hippity Hoppity River Boppity, don't quote me on that, that's not my.
Who came up with that name?
But it's a, it starts from eleven to three, we have different age groups, so please come out and support, it's just a small thing that we're trying to start and continue to do it on an annual basis, just to get the city something to do, it's from eleven AM to three, age group start at zero to three, first age slot, then you go to four to eight, and then you finish up with the nine and twelve, and you can take pictures with the Easter Bunny. The Easter Bunny.
That is going to be the Easter Bunny.
We do have a picture of the bunny, but she didn't.
She can stand up, can she stand up?
I don't know if we can really share that on a live.
Can we? I don't even want to see.
The next thing I want to add to it is, the twenty-ninth of April is our last lunch on the riverfront, starting in May, we're going to move it to the evening time. With a little music and things, so the third Friday in May would be the standard going twelfth in May for four to eight PM, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention, I'm not going to keep it no more, no longer than we have to tonight, other than that, everything is going smoothly in my departments, any questions?
No questions, thank you, sir.
And I do have a report, I sent it to the city manager once he approves it, I sent it to you.
Appreciate it, thanks, sir. It's Fire Marshal, you got anything? Chief, come on. Fire school, the, the fire academy at the high school?
Wow.
And our first female firefighter in recent times, who graduated under our minority scholarship program, is on board. And doing, and doing well.
Thank you. Congratulations. We've got an old Fire Marshal, very old Fire Marshal in here today. Mark Leonard, go ahead and stand up so we can recognize you.
He's not, he's not old, he's mature.
Chief. Where's that chair?
As stated in our last meeting, myself and city manager got together, presented him with the community service engagement plan that we came up with and, and wanted quickly actually get moving on, as you can see, we're going to be doing quarterly zone meetings, allowing for increased communication between law enforcement and community, by developing an outlet for the community and the department to voice their concerns and collectively, collectively develop solutions. One zone a month, touching each zone at least four times a year in different areas, so we can cover the city in a year. Our first zone meeting will be held on April twenty-sixth, covering the south side from Ninth Street to Mosley and Saint John's to Twigg, we're going to announce our location, we're trying to get the building secured, but we want to do a building in each area if possible. The next is our community events, you're all familiar with most of the community events we have, but we just added just something new, and I wanted to make sure I listed it, as we've done in previous times, our neighborhood festivals, we're going to be doing our neighborhood festivals, which provide positive contacts and interactions within the community, and then along with that, the new thing we're adding is Brain Freeze Friday, we're going to go ahead and provide ICs, bring things out to, we can just bring something into the community to provide, again, like you said, positive interactions and communication, and that's going to be on June tenth. Reestablished the, reestablishment of the pastors and police alliance program, is a coalition of pastors who work in partnership with the police department to serve citizens of this black Florida, members attend monthly meetings and are called to help citizens in crisis, this program is a unique and ministerial opportunity which will assign community pastors to work in neighborhoods throughout the city, to develop ongoing relationships and trust within the community. First meeting has been scheduled for Monday, April eighteen, our letters are already gone out, and we, our invites have been sent in hand or hand-delivered. Next is our community police council, this is something that I know not only has come up before, several of you have asked about it, we've spoken about it, I've actually spoken with the mayor about it, but the community, community police council, the Placa Police Department will comprise, will, CPC will be comprised of representatives of businesses, churches, community agencies, youth groups, law enforcement, and the CPC is responsible for developing, overseeing, and assisting with implement, with implement, implementing executive, executive strategies to reduce crime and disorder, change perceptions, and facilitate positive engagement and increase trust between the Placa Police Department as well as neighborhoods, they serve by implementing community police relations groups to provide venues for the community to have the ability to speak, be heard, and have their perspective considered, all while helping to bridge the gap between the police department and the community members. Members identify for the first, will be identified for the first meeting, which we plan to hold the first week of May.
Are you limiting membership on that?
Excuse me, sir.
You're limiting the number of members, or you operating as a board?
Yeah, we're going to, we're, we're looking at, or we have, we're reaching out to individuals to invite, and it's just going to be a key amount, we don't want to spread it too large, but we do want to have an effective group that touches all areas.
Like the old advisory board we have?
That's correct.
If we have a recommendation, can we, can we pass that on to you?
Please do, yes, sir. The next one is Talking Tuesday, community walks, we're going to be conducting walks within the community, contacting residents and creating dialogue, once a month, members of the police department will, will take to the streets within the specific neighborhood and go door to door to meet residents, also in tow are representatives from the governmental entities such as the Public Works, Social Services, Public Utilities, and members of the local clergy, all in attendance to get an accurate depiction of what's going on and the way things look on the ground, to join the PPD's problem-solving matrix, this allows us to address problems as we see them, and community, provide the departments to give to the community while talking to the citizens. First date for Talking Tuesday has been set for April nineteenth at six PM, the address for Talking Tuesday is, the neighborhood for Talking Tuesday is going to be North Eleventh Street to North Nineteenth Street from Madison to Polley Street, and we will, we plan on getting out and doing those things, again, these are all things that, over the period of time, we've heard, we've seen, and we need to know that we need to implement and get stuff staged. The last is community survey, we are building community survey, implementing the online survey as well for the community members to fill out, officers contacted the public, officers are going to be contacting the public during the duty, we'll provide cars and case numbers and website addresses, so we can get the surveys out and get citizens' comments back on it, these are, again, things that, for a number of different reasons that were discontinued, but we are bringing back, and we are excited to actually move forward and get community service back in to the community.
I have a question. Question with regards to our substations, how many substations do we have within the city, the neighborhood substations?
We have, well, we had temporary, a temporary substation down at the riverfront, we was experiencing quite a bit of problems, the building down at the riverfront.
Ship store.
Ship store was unoccupied at the time, so we used it as a substation, and we go in and out of it from time to time just to make sure we can show and have an appearance, the main substation, which was used as a neighborhood house as of recent, has been the one on the north side, and we've been utilizing it now fully as a substation on a day-to-day basis.
I didn't hear you mention that, but I wanted to make sure that the citizens know, I've passed by several times and saw police officers staff there, and I think that presence have made a, made some difference on that side, so thank you so much for that.
Yes, I actually was there Friday speaking to related to Pink Store, and she was saying how, how much the officers are, are in the community and just there and about just overseeing the community and making sure things are all proper, so we certainly appreciate all, all of the efforts you guys are doing.
Last thing, um, the, the old gang task force, are you seeing a need for that or anything proactive from a team engagement standpoint to deal with?
As an, as an investigative, I'm putting together some investigative tools to, to address the gang stuff that we're seeing, and the issues or the groups, gangs that we're, we're coming across and identifying, we have, we along with the floor Department of Law Enforcement and the Sheriff's Office have gotten together and put together efforts, investigative efforts to address those issues.
I think it may be an opportunity, if you called a few years back, we actually had, remember, we had the speakers come in, different speakers that came in and went and did assembly at the schools, because we're seeing the, the number of explosions going up, all those different things going up at the same time, it may be an opportunity to bring in some speakers that can start to hit home with some folks.
I think that's something we can broach with the school board, I know we are, we do include that in our, our Monday morning, our Monday afternoon meetings, that's some of the topics we talk about, because we're all crossing those same bridges with those individuals within the school as well, so I think that's something we can bring up and work towards.
You have some local folks too, who've got some experience in, in dealing with it, who are willing to come forward, so if you want those names, I'll give them to you.
Yes, sir.
So you mentioned that, but you are still having the monthly meeting with Sheriff's Office, school administrators, and PPD staff?
Yes, sir.
So I was also, so you put something in paper about the car break-ins?
Yes, sir, we've, we've, along with the Sheriff's Office, had a number of different break-ins, we've put some information out to make sure that the citizens are aware of it, as well as it helps to identify those individuals that's out there committing those crimes.
All right, any other questions for the commission?
Commendations, sir, appreciate.
We appreciate the report, definitely.
Thank you, sir.
I like the detail.
Thank you.
Ms. Shank? Catherine Williams, you wait. Ms. Shank?
I just want to mention that at the next commission meeting, we will be having our leadership academy graduation, so very excited for that.
Wonderful exercise, just to walk in on Toby Williams giving his presentation at the end, so, Ms. Krantz?
I'm just very excited for everything we've got going on with, with the Hippity Hoppity River Boppy, and everybody's waiting for me to say that, and, and a special thanks for the, for the recent birthday recognitions, guys.
Y'all just don't know what it's like to have sunny and sunshine together.
You can't get enough of my sunshine.
Captain Mulberry? Mr. Den. Mr. Dennis, well.
Nothing from the gas authority tonight, sir. Everything's going great there.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Jones.
Um, yes, just a quick update on the orientations and all that. That we've been doing interviews at current waste, the water treatment plant, community affairs and fire department are fully staffed. With our interviews that we did this week, once all of the orientations are complete, city hall, two positions. The wastewater treatment plant, three positions and the police department, one position shall be, be staffed, fully staffed. Which will only leave us the public works department to, I'm focused on next week to get those positions interviewed and staffed. Also, I'd like to say this is our third month of our employee appreciation. The past two recipients, we've had very positive feedback from what they've received and recognition, recognizing them as employee of the month. And so just moving forward, we'll just, I'll be able to focus a little bit more on public works and getting that position staffed. So at that time, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Holmes, anything else?
No, sir, I'm good.
Campbell?
Yes, just real briefly, want to talk about one thing that I brought to Mr. Holmes. I know in the past couple of months, weeks, we've had a lot of people coming in talking about the trash and all of those things. So I proposed to Mr. Holmes and he's been working with Keep Putnam Beautiful. I know we've done in the past Palack of Pride, but trying to possibly bring in the, we, we often know about, we know about the Adopt a Highway. But the possibilities of adopting one of the city streets that will be an opportunity for our civic organizations, churches to kind of take pride in their area. So that's something that Attorney Holmes is working with. Well, city manager Holmes is working with Keep Putnam Beautiful, just to see how we can implement that in that, that in the city. Oftentimes when we hear the complaints, they expect us to make a difference, but together we all could make a difference. So I think that will be an awesome way for us to engage our community in making sure that we together keep our cities, keep our city clean. Again, thank you to the commission for the opportunity to move forth with the youth council. With Sonny, the team that we have assembled, Ms. Moats, I, I believe you're going to do great things within the city and within our kids. And I think that's pretty much it. I would like to have a meeting with regards to some of the concerns that I have with the fire department that have been coming directly to me. So if we can set up a time next week probably to talk about it and have in that meeting Chief Taylor. And I think he probably would address some of the concerns that we have heard tonight. But again, these are just some personal concerns, some personal things that have come to me directly.
Absolutely.
Mr. Jones? I was going to have you tell Commissioner Campbell about what the Minnesota make us out of, I do on a monthly basis as relates to cleaning up streets.
Well, I don't know about that, but I would love to hear more about it.
Invite you on one Saturday.
I'd love to join and bring others too.
Commissioner Borum.
Yes, I just want to commend Commissioner Campbell for helping to bring the youth council forward to the commission and continuing that ball rolling and along with Commissioner McCaskill. We want to thank you guys for that because again, the youth are, are, are futures, so we want to definitely make sure that they're plugged in. I want to also congratulate our marshal Bramford for his new, new position and role, looking forward to working with you in that role. So, and thank the staff for all the excellent work you guys been doing. So just don't want to leave anybody out. That's all I have.
I thought you were going to say Fire Marshal Bill.
Just, I want to thank staff for all of their hard work and efforts that they put forward to supporting Commissioner Campbell. And thank you Commissioner Campbell for taking this task on. I have already spoken with, had a conversation with city manager Holmes regarding the fire issues. However, I will be looking forward to hearing your concerns and us moving forward to try to come to some resolution to these issues that have been brought before us. That's all.
In, in closing, first, thank you to our citizens for their patience and some of the things that we've been dealing with over the last few months. We got an opportunity to sit down in a workshop with the Community Action Network, which is a new organization comprised of various people from throughout the community, from all different segments. And I, you know, and looking at this report that we have here, I think it's a great opportunity to be able to tie some of that stuff in with some of the initiatives that were presented to us tonight as well. But I think the other part is when we look at our community as a whole, thank you to the county commission for, for the, for a good workshop and for new beginnings as it relates to putting some things in place. Even with Commissioner Ross, he has on multiple occasions brought forth some businesses that were interested in the city of Palacka. And although he's a Seminole, we appreciate it. And so we definitely appreciate those efforts in moving the community forward. And also to this commission. I mean, I, I think all too many times we get more attacked than we do think. But I think at the end of the day, we continue to work and move forward. So I think there's a, there's a comprehensive group of employees and, and staff and commission that have worked together and been committed and spent long hours just hoping to make this community better. We're continually thriving. We've got investors who are realizing that Palacka is truly the last snapshot of old Florida. And sit at the table with them constantly and sometimes we're reminded of where we are and what the greatness of this community is by people who see things that we become blind to over time. And so with the adversities that exist, they create opportunities with the hope that's in our future. It creates even greater chances for greatness. And so we'll continue to push forward. We're getting ready for Blue Crab. It's going to take a lot of work. It's going to take a lot of community effort. And this is where the rubber meets the road and the good people of Palacka will come together to make this festival the showcase that it's always been and it will continue to be that in the future. So we encourage our citizens who want to volunteer to come out, those who want to show up and have a good time, come out as well. But we want Blue Crab to be something big and I think tonight was a big step in the right direction for that. The promoter will be off and running tomorrow after this contract is signed and we're excited. And council pushed out that contract pretty quick. So, but all hands on deck, we're going to be looking for help because this is going to be a tough one to pull off in a six-week period. And so I, I, I think it's going to be able to be pulled off and I think it's going to be one that's going to be good for this community as a whole. Because as we continue on with the pandemic, we need to be mindful that it's not over. That people are continually being affected and dying on a regular basis and that we just got to continually work with our new norm.